Well, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to today's council meeting. Could I remind members that today's meeting is being webcast? So we're all available to view all over the world. Members, tomorrow is World Kindness Day. A day to remind ourselves of the importance of being kind to others, and indeed to ourselves, and indeed to the Lord Mayor. Let's take a moment to celebrate the power of kindness, and may we continue to lead with kindness and indeed encourage it in others. And, if I may, in that vein. Colleagues, it is a huge privilege for each and every one of us to sit in this chamber. Our residents put us here, and in so doing, put an enormous amount of trust in us. And it is an absolute fact that in this chamber we have huge licence to say what we feel needs to be said. But the fact that we can say things in a particular way does not mean we necessarily should say things in a particular way. What we say, the words we use, how we use them, matter. It matters to us, it matters to one another, more than that, it matters to the residents that put us here. And so I just urge, with a particular view to World Kindness Day tomorrow, but also with a view to how I know we as Leeds traditionally do things, that we are mindful of how we speak in this chamber. Thank you. Can I move on, still under my announcements, just to say a particular thank you to everybody: colleagues, members, veterans, cadets, armed forces personnel, families, across the piece, members of the public, who took part in supporting this year's Remembrance Sunday commemorations and indeed our Armistice Day commemorations yesterday. Their professionalism, dedication, teamwork ensured that events were delivered with dignity and the respect that they deserve. From behind the scenes planning to on-the-day coordination, every effort made a huge difference and was deeply appreciated and helped Leeds honour those who have served, those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. And if I may, can I particularly mention our council Armed Forces Champions led by councillor Jane Dowson, but of course also councillor Tom Hinchcliffe, councillor Billy Flynn and councillor Simon Brown. Could I ask you please to join me in a huge round of applause for everyone involved? Members across the chamber were, I know, hugely saddened to see the devastation caused by Hurricane Melissa across the Caribbean, especially the impact, the tragic impact on the people of Jamaica. So far, 32 lives have been lost, with many, many more still missing. Communities across the island are in urgent need of support. Electricity and phone lines are down, roads are blocked, access to clean drinking water remains limited. Hospitals and emergency services have been severely damaged, leaving many without vital care. In Leeds, in response to this, councillors Eileen Taylor and councillor Sharon Hamilton have stepped up and have led a local fundraising effort aiming to raise at least £50,000 to support relief and recovery in Jamaica. Could I urge everybody to please, both yourselves and using your networks, to do everything we can to help support their efforts on behalf of our city to help them make the difference that is needed? I know our thoughts are with everyone affected by this disaster, especially with those in Leeds who have strong family and community ties to Jamaica. Colleagues, your support can help bring hope and aid to those in desperate needs, and I know when it comes to these things, Leeds always leads the way. That is my announcement, so I will now turn to the agenda. Item one, councillor Flint.
I move that the minutes be approved.
Councillor Stevenson.
Second, Lord Mayor.
So I'll call for the vote to approve the minutes: those for? Those against? Any abstentions? That is carried, thank you very much. Declarations of interest, item two, invite members to declare any interests. I see nobody so declaring, thank you. Item three, communications, Chief Executive.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, no communications.
Wonderful, that moves us to item four, deputations, Chief Executive.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. To report, there are four deputations today in respect of Leeds Children's Mayor, second MenCap, third Traffic Concerns in Wetherby, and fourth Leeds Conversation Club.
Councillor Flint.
I move that the deputations be received.
Councillor Stevenson.
Second, Lord Mayor.
So let's call for the vote: those for? Those against? Any abstentions? That is carried, thank you very much. So let's bring in deputation number one, the Leeds Children's Mayor, the fabulous Sienna.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Sienna, just a moment, easy. See, Sienna's already easing into taking over, so. Well, good afternoon, Sienna, and welcome to today's council meeting. If you would now please make your speech to council as if we could stop you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sienna Silver Farber, and I'm the newly-elected Leeds Children's Mayor. My manifesto is raising awareness for diversity, bullying and discrimination. Imagine opening a box of crayons and every crayon is the same colour. Boring, right? Now imagine a box with every colour you can think of. Bold, bright and beautiful, that's what diversity's like. It makes life more interesting and exciting. In Leeds, many children face bullying due to appearance, culture or what they believe in. Thirty per cent of young people have or are being bullied. This can make children feel isolated, sad and unsafe. Leeds is a diverse city with children from all around the world, but sometimes this diversity leads to discrimination. One in five children in Leeds live in poverty. Every child deserves to be respected and included. We must work together to create a safe, accepting environment for all. This is where I need your help. Three things me and my school could do to tackle this issue. Introduce a school cultural week. Each day could focus on a different part of the world with food, music, art, clothing and lucky charms shared by students. Kindness buddies. We could create a buddy system where older children look out for younger children and everyone has someone to talk to if they feel left out or are being bullied. And children can help find a solution. We have this at our school with Mindmates. A take-what-you-need board, a board with sticky notes that offer kind words, affirmations or friendly challenges. Example: give someone a compliment or sit next to someone new at lunch. Children can take this when in need of a boost. Why don't we try this now? Turn to the person next to you and pay them a compliment. Doesn't that feel good? Three things Leeds as a city could do to tackle this issue. Citywide Be You Campaign. A city campaign with posters, videos and events that celebrate diversity and teach children that it's okay to be different. Schools, nurseries and libraries can all take part. Leeds Children's Diversity Council. A special group of children from across the city who meet to share ideas, plan events and make sure children's voices are heard when decisions are made about our lives and community. Community champions. Involve local figures, athletes, musicians and actors from Leeds to speak out and serve as role models against bullying. Videos and messages can be shared on social media for schools. My campaign slogan was: One City, Many Voices, Let's Celebrate Us All. Let's make Leeds the best crayon box ever. Now, back to work, you lot.
Councillor Flint.
Thank you so much, Sienna, for that amazing speech. We look forward to seeing what you do with your time. And I move that the matter be referred to the Director of Children and Families for consideration and consultation with the relevant exec member. A response will be provided by the Directorate to the Deputation and all members of council will be notified about the response. Thank you.
Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and may I say, Sienna, thank you very much for setting the tone of the meeting today for us. I am one of Sienna's councillors, so it's great to see that Children's Lord Mayor comes from the best ward in the city. And we look forward, Children's Lord Mayor, to seeing how you, first of all, get a grip of our Lord Mayor this year and set us a task doing what we are here to do. And in the spirit of your recommendations to us, when we have our tea in the banqueting hall later on, I'll be sat at table four if any Labour members want to come and have tea with me and sit next to somebody you wouldn't ordinarily do so. So congratulations and I second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. So I'm going to call for the vote to refer the deputation: those for? Those against? Any abstentions? It looks like it's unanimously carried. Sienna, that was fantastic, and thank you for a fantastic start to your Children's Mayorial Year, and thank you for coming to today's meeting. Officers from the relevant department will be in contact with you in due course. Have a fantastic afternoon. So our second deputation today is Leeds MenCap. Colleagues will know that is my Lord Mayor's charity. And so good afternoon to you and welcome to today's council meeting. Please do now make your speech to council, which should please be no longer than five minutes. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Lord Mayor and members of the council. My name is Alison Jackson, and I am the senior fundraiser at Leeds MenCap, the Lord Mayor's charity. This is my colleague Rebecca Amos, who also works in fundraising. My focus today is to share insight into the vital work that we do at Leeds MenCap and the significant positive impact it is having right here in our city. Thank you for this valuable opportunity to speak to you all. Leeds MenCap is an independent charity with a 70-year history. Although affiliated to MenCap, we operate completely independently of the national charity and are wholly responsible for raising our own income and delivering our services. We offer compassionate, tailored support to children and young people with learning disabilities, autism and other complex needs, as well as their families and carers right across the city. Our aim is to support individuals to develop their strengths, build lasting connections and achieve their full potential. Our home, the Vineyard Centre in LS9, provides a safe and inclusive space for all. It's purpose-built with facilities including our much-loved soft playroom and sensory room, multi-purpose activity spaces and outdoor play area. While based in Bermentoughs and Richmond Hill, we proudly support families from every ward in Leeds. Crucially, a diagnosis is not required to access support. We focus on the individual and their needs. Our families tell us they frequently experience isolation and vulnerability due to limited support and access to inclusive facilities and activities. Raising a child with a learning disability, autism or other complex needs can be incredibly challenging, marked by emotional, social, medical and financial difficulties. At the Vineyard Centre, children and young people can access youth clubs and holiday play schemes, providing safe, inclusive and welcoming environments for fun and friendship. Our sibling support group, affectionately known as SIBS, offers a unique space for brothers and sisters to connect with others who share similar lived experiences. Our Family Support Service provides essential advice, information and opportunities for peer support networks. We also operate Jimbo's Community Nursery, which includes Hawthorn Playroom for children in the city aged two to four years who have special educational needs. With a high staff ratio, children are supported to progress towards learning and developmental goals based on their individual needs and abilities. In the last financial year, Leeds MenCap supported over 790 children, young people and families across our services. This represents significant growth. Two hundred and eighty-four families were supported by the Family Support Service, a 35% increase from the previous year. Four hundred and eighty-three children and young people attended clubs and play schemes, marking a 60% increase. Twenty-seven children attended Hawthorn Playroom, our specialist nursery provision, a 29% increase. The need for connection is clear, as one parent shared. It's really nice to talk to other parents. I can't talk to my friends, they don't really get it. It helps to talk to someone who knows what it's like. My friends, they have empathy, but it's just different if you've not experienced it. You can be really isolated, especially when you're just at the start. Leeds MenCap is supporting communities at a crucial time. We know there are challenges with services reducing or closing whilst demand is at an all-time high. Despite the difficult financial climate, we continue to successfully provide vital services for children, young people and their families. Becoming the Lord Mayor's charity will genuinely make a difference for Leeds MenCap. This support is absolutely vital. It will help us raise awareness of the challenges children, young people and their families face, boost our visibility and through dedicated fundraising events, bring in those much-needed funds. Together, all of this means we can reach even more families right here in Leeds who need our help. We hope you join us in championing the Lord Mayor's charitable work. Your support will truly make its impact bigger. Thank you for your time today. We absolutely love Leeds MenCap and truly believe in the vital work we do. The Vineyard Centre is a wonderful space. Please do get in touch if you'd like to visit, we'd love to show you around. I'll leave you with these heartfelt words from a parent demonstrating Leeds MenCap's life-changing impact. Finding Leeds MenCap and that hour and a half with them every Friday has genuinely changed my life. I've met the most wonderful people who have accepted me and my son with open arms. I found a community where I used to feel so alone. Thank you.
Councillor Flint.
Thank you for coming today. I move that the matter be referred to the Deputy Chief Exec for consideration and consultation with the relevant exec members and that a response be provided by the Directorate to the Deputation and all members of council will be notified of a response to the deputation. Thank you.
Councillor Stevenson.
And I'm delighted to second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. So call for the vote: all those for? Any against? Any abstentions? That is carried, thank you very much indeed. Well, thank you so much for coming to today's meeting. Officers from the relevant department will be in contact with you in due course, and we look forward to working with you for the next six months as well. Thank you very much indeed. So this is deputation number three, Traffic Concerns in Wetherby. Good afternoon to you all, thank you so much for coming to today's meeting. If you could please now make your speech to council, which should not be longer than five minutes. Thank you so much, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, my Lord Mayor, councillors, officers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of Wetherby residents. And may I introduce our delegation, please? On my right, we've got Ingrid McLaughlin, we've got Deborah Sizwick, we've got Deirdre Williams and Jennifer Sizwick. We're all residents locally in the centre of Wetherby. But thank you for the opportunity to speak. Our historic town faces a major highways crisis. Traffic congestion, road safety hazards and rising levels of air pollution are threatening health, safety and the quality of life. The situation is getting worse, urgent action is needed. The town's road system was designed in the age of horse-drawn traffic. Narrow streets like Crossley Street and St James Street within the town conservation area are overwhelmed by the size, scale and sheer volume of modern-day traffic. There's no possibility of road widening. These roads were never meant to carry 40-tonne juggernauts, double-decker buses, heavy goods vehicles, huge farm tractors and trailers. Yet they are regularly used as a shortcut to avoid the town centre. The weight limit for 7.5 tonnes is routinely ignored. The town's major growth has brought more pressures onto the road system. In the last decade, around 1,000 new homes have been built in Wetherby. The population has increased substantially. More house building is underway. 780 homes are being built opposite the racecourse. An application to build a further 130 on that same site is in the pipeline. Major housing developments in North Yorkshire have also contributed to the traffic in the town. The main road between Harrogate and Wetherby along Spofford Hill is used as a cut-through to the A1 motorway. The North Yorkshire Council Local Plan Call for Sites exercise has led to huge interest in building large numbers of new homes on land around the northern boundary of Wetherby. It will make the situation worse. In June this year, Hallam Land submitted an application to North Yorkshire Council to build 210 new homes directly on the boundary with Wetherby, on the north-western boundary. Miller Homes proposed to build another 100 houses on the boundary. The Maltkill Development, just a short drive from the town, proposed to build up to 3,000 new homes. Each development brings more traffic, more vehicles to the town's roads. Without intervention, congestion, air pollution and the risk of accident and injury will increase. Improving road safety near Crossley Street Primary School has been identified as our most urgent concern. Two years ago, the Highways and Road Safety Group met and focused on this particular area. Despite a 20 miles per hour speed limit, many drivers ignore it. Illegal parking within the zigzag lines of the pedestrian crossing outside Sainsbury's Local, opposite the school gates, is a persistent hazard. Work by Leeds City Council to install railings to help prevent illegal parking began in February 2025. Here we are, nine months later, the work is still incomplete. After two years, we're still waiting for promised improvements to the pedestrian crossing. This really is unacceptable. The safety of schoolchildren and pedestrians is of paramount importance. Must we wait until there is a serious injury accident? We've got problems of air and noise pollution. The school playground borders a congested road, leaving children exposed to harmful emissions. We all know that air pollution is an invisible killer. Forty thousand people in this country every year die of air pollution, premature deaths. Noise pollution is also severe. On St James Street, the canyon effect of this narrow road traps sound. Even with double glazing, residents cannot block out the constant roar of traffic. Vibrations from heavy vehicles, of course, cracks in walls. Plastering these Victorian homes have been peeling off. All these homes are over 100 years old with shallow foundations. Sleep is disturbed, lives disrupted. If we want people to leave their cars at home, we must provide a viable alternative. We need frequent, reliable and affordable public transport. That's not the case in Wetherby. We don't have a rail station, so good bus services are essential. Instead of improving services, they've actually been cut over the past decade. As the town grows, so must its public transport provision. By the way, we came on the bus this morning, so just to make sure that people are aware of that. We need urgent action, but rather than simply complain, our community has been proactive in seeking solutions. We conducted a local survey and compiled a detailed report which I circulated in advance of this meeting. The report calls for a comprehensive highway strategy to make Wetherby fit for the future. It also contains a number of practical proposals focusing mainly on Crossley Street and St James Street. These include enforcement of speed and weight limits, completion of long-awaited safety measures on the pedestrian crossing outside the school, effective monitoring of air and noise pollution, improved traffic flow and better public transport.
Could I ask you to move to your last sentence, please?
In concluding, Lord Mayor, we fully appreciate the many challenges and demands facing the city and the strain on finance and limited resources. But I urge you, on behalf of our community, to consider our report and provide the necessary action so badly needed. Thank you very much for your attention and for your commitment to the people of Leeds and Wetherby. Thank you.
Councillor Flint.
Thank you. I move that the matter be referred to the Director of City Development for consideration and consultation with the relevant exec member and that a response be provided by the Directorate to the Deputation and that all members of council will be notified by the director or relevant chief officer of the council's response to the deputation.
Thank you.
Councillor Stevenson.
And I second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. So a call for the vote, please, to refer the deputation: those for? Those against? Any abstentions? That is carried, thank you very much indeed. Thank you for coming to today's meeting. Officers from the relevant department will be in contact with you in due course. Have a great afternoon, thank you. So, moving to deputation number four, the Leeds Conversation Club. And good afternoon to you, welcome to today's council meeting. If you could please now make your speech to council, which should be no longer please than five minutes.
My Lord Mayor and members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today about our charity, Conversation Club Leeds. My name is Margaret Cliff and I am a volunteer, with me our trustees Dorothy Reed and Wakas Albaghary. Conversation Club was established nine years ago. Our purpose is to help asylum seekers and refugees make friends, practise speaking English and gain confidence in their new surroundings. We aim to make everyone feel welcome in our country and city, wherever they may come from and whatever their background. The asylum system may seem hostile and difficult to navigate, especially for those who have been traumatised by their experiences and speak little English. Those awaiting asylum decisions are in limbo, unable to access formal language tuition at college for six months, unable to work and thus unable to start a settled lifestyle. college for six months, unable to work, and thus unable to start a settled lifestyle. We provide a regular, stable, friendly meeting place. Our guests come from countries affected by war, internal conflict, and social intolerance, currently mostly in the Middle East and East Africa. What do we do? Every Tuesday in Holbeck and Thursday in central Leeds, volunteers welcome asylum seekers and refugees with refreshments including drinks, biscuits, and fruit. We invite them to join small groups to practise English together, whether they are beginners or more advanced speakers. In January, we were honoured and delighted to welcome the then-Lord Mayor, councillor Abigail Marshall-Katung, to one of our Thursday sessions. We help our guests to understand things that we take for granted, for example, practical things like going to the GP, joining the library, queuing for the bus, noticing special days such as Halloween and Remembrance Day, learning about Leeds, the river, the buildings, and the colours of Leeds United. We also signpost guests to other organisations that can guide them, such as for housing for those recently granted leave to remain, or to places to get free meals. Our capacity is seventy-five at our Leeds central venue, but demand is so high that now guests can only join us on alternate weeks. Also, we arrange outings to provide a wider view of Leeds and Yorkshire, and for mental release from the limited environment of asylum seeker accommodation. Often, we make use of wonderful open spaces and venues provided by Leeds City Council. Recently, we have visited Scarborough, Temple Newsome House and Estate, the Chevin, Howarth, and Roundhead Park. For the more energetic, we have arranged use of Leeds Active Centres and outdoor volunteering alongside local volunteers with the council's Countryside Rangers and Woodland Creation Team. So what is the cost? Our annual budget is around thirty thousand pounds, which must be raised from grants, donations, for example through JustGiving dot com, and fundraising events. Applications for grants are competitive, and we cannot always be successful. We have been fortunate in receiving grants from Leeds City Council, either directly or indirectly. For example, we have received MICE funds and from other grant-awarding bodies. Some funds have been given specifically for providing outings and physical activities. Our regular expenditure is on venue hire and bus tickets. Asylum seekers in hotels receive nine pounds ninety-five per week, which is not enough for them to afford five pounds for travel costs. As a high proportion of our expenditure is on bus fares, we are already stretched and are vulnerable to any increase in fares, which would consequently reduce the number of guests that could join us. So, in conclusion, we believe that our work has a positive impact on the integration of asylum seekers and refugees in Leeds. We are very grateful for your support to date, and ask for continuing financial and political support for our work.
Councillor Flint.
Thank you. I move that the matter be referred to the Director of Communities, Housing and Environment for consideration and consultation with a relevant exec member, and that a response be provided by the directorate to the deputation, and all members of council to be notified by the director or relevant chief officer of the response to the deputation. Thank you.
Councillor Stevenson.
Second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Going to call for the vote to refer the deputation. Those for? Those against? Any abstentions? That is carried. Thank you. Well, thank you so much for coming to today's meeting. Officers from the relevant department will be in contact with you in due course. Have a great rest of the afternoon.
Thank you. Thanks.
We now have a procedural motion. Councillor Finnegan.
Can I move in terms of the notice? Thank you, Lord.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor.
Second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Call for the vote on the procedural motion. Those for? Those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. That is carried. Which now moves us to page five, agenda item five, executive questions. So we'll have question time for a period of one hour, after which we will break for a comfort break. So, question number one, councillor Lamb.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can the executive member for housing confirm what the maximum penalty is for a landlord who fails to apply for a selective licence in Armley, Farney and Wiltley, or elsewhere in the licence area?
Councillor Lennox.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In determining a fine for failing to apply for a selective licence in Leeds, each case would be considered on its own merits considering the facts and any mitigating circumstances presented to us. As part of any determination, the council must ensure that it is fair and proportionate. We take into account any aggravating circumstances such as previous convictions, length of the offence, record of substandard letting, and poor record of management. Officers will also take into account any mitigating circumstances such as cooperation with the investigation, steps to address the issue such as applying for a licence, acceptance of responsibility or guilt, or no previous convictions. Currently, the maximum fine could be thirty thousand pounds under the Housing and Planning Act 2016. However, the maximum civil penalty is usually for those offences deemed to be high harm. Where we have had such cases in Leeds, we generally deem them to have been lower harm offences, and the average penalty has been approximately four thousand two hundred and fifty pounds.
Councillor Lamb, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you for that answer, councillor Lennox. What would councillor Lennox say to my constituent Rachel, who recently inherited a property unexpectedly? And this Rachel did the right thing and tried to contact the council to arrange to be able to pay the fee over a lengthy period of time because she didn't know the situation she was going to be in, and was told, if you can't afford it, sell the house. What would you say to Rachel?
Councillor Lennox.
It would be inappropriate to comment on such an individual case, which could have been brought to me at any point before this meeting as well. To me? Okay, can you resend the email because I don't believe I've seen it? Thank you. When we don't have all the facts and evidence available to us, we don't know what mitigation has been made, what's been submitted to local authority, or what conversations have taken place, but I'm very happy to pick this up, which as yet I've not seen.
Councillor Galton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Pubs and clubs can be the economic and social lifeblood of local communities, but a poorly-managed pub can become a blight on people's lives. Effective licensing of hospitality venues is key to ensuring that they enhance local areas, and local community involvement in the awarding of licences is key to making this happen. Does the executive member responsible for licensing agree with me that the government's proposals to axe alcohol licensing notices in England and Wales are a threat to the health of local democracy, as well as the health of our local newspapers who rely on the advertising income of such notices?
Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, and thank you for the question, councillor Galton. And first of all, I acknowledge the crucial role that effective licensing plays on supporting vibrant, well-managed hospitality venues, while ensuring that local communities remain actively involved in decision-making. The government's proposal to remove the statutory requirement for alcohol licensing notices to be published in local newspapers is aimed at reducing costs for businesses, particularly smaller operators who continue to face financial pressures. While we understand the intention to modernise processes and reduce administrative burdens, it is essential that any changes continue to uphold transparency and public engagement. It's worth noting that the cost of placing a newspaper advert can be disproportionately high. As an example, the Yorkshire Evening Post recently quoted one applicant two thousand eight hundred pounds for a single notice. And more recently, the Harrogate Advertiser quoted one thousand eight hundred pounds in comparison to that. The average cost of a licence application is between a hundred and eighty and three hundred and fifteen pounds, intended to reflect cost recovery. Whilst local newspapers have previously argued that the requirement supports their revenue, this should not be maintained at such excessive costs to applicants. Applicants are also required to display a blue site notice on the premises for twenty-eight days following submission of their application. This is widely regarded by licensing authorities as the most effective method of ensuring transparency and public awareness. Additionally, many residents now subscribe to Public Access, our online register, which provides automatic alerts when new licence applications are submitted. Taken together, site notices and the improved Public Access System provide robust safeguards to public engagement. While we recognise the concerns raised by local newspapers, the preservation of their incomes should not outweigh the need for a fair and proportionate process for applicants for licensing.
Councillor Galton, supplementary?
By way of supplementary, since councillor Cooper recognises the tension in the intention of the government to reward the hospitality industry by reducing its costs, it should not have unintentional consequences of making local democratic reporting a victim because local newspapers can't actually afford the drop in income. So can she please take those concerns back to the elected representatives from Leeds that form part of that government to ensure that these proposals are indeed amended to make sure that they don't have serious consequences for our democracy?
Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And councillor Galton, I'm sure you're aware, if you look at your own party policies and what your own Liberal Democrat colleagues are doing nationally, they are also supporting the needs of hospitality in this difficult times for them at the moment. So I'd urge you to check with your own colleagues what they're doing too. And I would just say that this consultation has only just closed this last week, so this is a very early question around this. We, as the Leeds Licensing Authority, submitted a comprehensive twenty-one-page submission to the government on these consultations, and indeed laid out all the various arguments, including the ones that councillor Galton has raised today. So thank you very much.
Councillor Heselwood.
Can the executive member update council on this year's White Ribbon campaign, please?
Councillor Harland.
Thank you, councillor Heselwood, for the question, and of course, all the hard work that you've put into the White Ribbon campaign for a number of years. And of course, I'm delighted to update council. The Sixteen Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence is an annual international campaign that calls for the prevention and elimination of violence against women and girls. It begins on twenty-fifth of November, the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women, and runs until the tenth of December, International Human Rights Day. The theme for 2025 is unite to end digital violence against all women and girls. Digital violence against women and girls is one of the fastest-growing forms of abuse. This year's campaign is also a reminder that digital safety is central to gender equality. So what is digital abuse? Digital tools are increasingly being used to stalk, harass, and abuse women and girls. This includes image-based abuse, non-consensual sharing of intimate images, often called revenge porn, and leaked nudes, cyberbullying, trolling, and online threats, online harassment and sexual harassment, hate speech and disinformation on social media platforms, online stalking or surveillance tracking to monitor someone's activities, online grooming and sexual exploitation, misogynistic networks, for example, the Manosphere and Insult Forums. Digital violence targets women more than men across all walks of life, but especially those with public or online visibility, such as activists, journalists, women in politics, human rights defenders, and young women. The impact is even worse for women facing intersecting forms of discrimination, including race, disability, gender identity, or sexual orientation. So that's the sixteen days of action, but what about White Ribbon Day? White Ribbon Day is also marked on the twenty-fifth of November and is the start of the sixteen days of activism. On White Ribbon Day, everyone, but especially men, are invited to make the White Ribbon promise. That is, never use, excuse, or remain silent about violence against women. The theme for 2025 is We Speak Up: Letting Sexism Slide Puts Women and Girls at Risk. Sexist jokes, catcalling, staring, and comments might seem harmless, but they are serious because they can lead to violence and abuse. This White Ribbon Day, we want more men to use their voices to speak up and create a world where everyone is safe, equal, and respected. Every time we ignore something that doesn't feel right, we miss a chance to set a better example. In terms of events and activities planned for 25, here are just a few examples. This is not a complete list, or we might be here for an awful lot longer this evening. You'll have seen today that the safeguarding and DV team in the antechamber before council with our White Ribbon Promise boards, selfie boards, etc., giving you all the opportunity to have your photos taken individually or in groups, ready to share the White Ribbon sixteen days message when the campaign begins. Women's Voice: Listen and Learn Women's Safety Online, Thursday the thirteenth of November, twelve till one. Community Safety colleagues will be joined by women-friendly leads to spotlight key safety initiatives delivered in Leeds. The session will also cover the importance of White Ribbon Day and the sixteen days of activism, encouraging staff to get involved, and staff can join the session online. Leeds Jog On Active Bystander Training, which is also online, that's on the twenty-fifth of November, twelve till one. A White Ribbon Day active bystander online training session, being delivered by Yorkshire Sport Foundation. During the session, participants will learn about why we need bystanders, what being an active bystander means, excuse me, and tools to help people intervene safely. You can find out more about the Jog On campaign and book our campaign website. Woodhouse Moor Park Run, Saturday the twenty-ninth of November. The safeguarding and DV teams, joined by the lovely councillor Heselwood and potentially others, will have a White Ribbon stall at the city's biggest park run, handing out White Ribbon stickers, White Ribbon information, and encouraging runners to make the White Ribbon promise. Also, the Ottley Run information stalls on the twenty-ninth of November. The safeguarding and DV team will take White Ribbon stalls up to the prime location along the Ottley Run route to promote, to campaign to participants, along with other information about women's safety initiatives, such as Ask for Angela and Stop the Spike. Comms and social media throughout the sixteen days of the campaign will also take place, and there'll be press releases, social media posts, sixteen days of digital calendar of men and boys talking about how they make a difference as a White Ribbon ambassador. The White Ribbon and sixteen days of activism digital toolkit will be shared this week with more information about the campaigns, activities planned in Leeds, and signposting to support for women and girls affected by violence. I'm very proud that Leeds City Council has been White Ribbon accredited since 2010, having most recently refreshed our accreditation last year in 2024 for a further three years. I'd like to end by thanking each and every one of you here in the chamber for the support that you have shown and continue to show this campaign. Gender-based violence has absolutely no place in our society, and I'm particularly grateful to our male allies who stand alongside us as we work to eradicate forever. I'd also like to say thank you to Jude Roberts and his team for all the work that they're doing on this agenda across the year. on this agenda across the years. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Heselwood, do you have a supplementary?
Body to join us at Park Run, including yourself, Lord Mayor.
If I can be there, I'm there. So question four is the newly substituted question. Councillor Finnegan.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can councillor Cooper, the executive board member behind the proposed sale of Noel Manor in Morley, confirm how much of the capital receipt from its sale will be ring fenced to be spent in Morley?
Councillor Cooper.
Thank you councillor Finnegan for your question, and I am delighted to answer it. The executive board agreed the closure of Noel Manor in July 2024. The sale will be eligible for the payment of Capital Receipt Incentive Scheme monies to the ward as per the approved regulations as set out in the executive board of October 2011. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Finnegan.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. By way of a supplementary, before this property goes out to auction, will councillor Cooper pledge to explore alternative uses of this building, including the Operation Valet legislation, which may generate funding for a veterans' hub? The interest shown by St Anne's to use the property to support young people with learning difficulties to be housed? And the Salvation, who are also exploring use of that particular building to support housing vulnerable people? Will she pledge to explore fully those alternatives before putting the property out to auction?
Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, and again, thanks for the additional questions and comments on that, councillor Finnegan. And just by way, I'm happy to speak to you outside of the chamber as well, if you would so wish. But just to give council a bit of additional information on Noel Manor, in December 23, the council's executive board approved proposals set out in the budget report. These proposals included the request to begin a period of consultation to close Noel Manor Residential Care Home in Morley. In addition to continuing to much-needed budget savings, the proposals aligned with the council's Better Lives Programme, which aimed to ensure our in-house services better reflected the needs and aspirations of people with care and support needs. This included an increase in desire for people to remain within their own homes for as long as possible or in extra-care housing. Noel Manor was experiencing falling occupancy and work was needed to bring the building up to the level it needed to be, factors which also contributed to its closure. All Noel Manor residents were found suitable alternative care home replacements. And councillor Finnegan, I know that you're aware that officers have been working with ward members and the local MP, and indeed other politicians have been working to try and find an alternative use, for instance, the social housing use and another, a number of other uses that have been explored, which is why Noel Manor's move-in to disposal has not happened until now. But if I may just turn briefly to the regional question four and address the referenced delay, I make no apology for ensuring officers took the time to fully engage with ward members and the local MP to explore all possible options. We are at the stage now where for any future use by a third party to be undertaken, we need to formally dispose of Noel Manor as a council asset, and that is exactly what we are doing. But as I said at the start of my response to your secondary question, councillor Finnegan, I'm more than happy to speak to you outside of the chamber about it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can the executive member provide an update on the Kirkstall Brewery accommodation?
Councillor Lennox.
That's an excellent question, councillor Brooks, thank you very much. Formerly vacant student accommodation at Kirkstall Brewery has been transformed to provide temporary accommodation, which is being managed directly by Leeds Housing Options. Each family unit accommodates up to three adults and their children and has a comfortable living space, kitchen facilities, cleaning equipment and shared laundry facilities. The lease was signed in mid-October and families have begun to move in. We anticipate that the accommodation will be at full capacity with 70 families having moved in by the end of this week. This development has provided further insight into how we deliver this type of accommodation for vulnerable homeless families, and we are now actively looking to expand with other providers over the coming months. And I'd just like to make it very clear how much of an improved offer this is for families living in temporary accommodation with space and space to do homework for children, private bathrooms, not the B and B accommodation that sometimes we've had to rely on as a result of the increase in homelessness among families that's happened over the last couple of years. And the fact that it's being managed directly by Leeds Housing Options gives us far more oversight over the quality of the accommodation. And with the new introduction of the Renters' Rights Bill and the abolition of section 21, we hope that this will mean that we can significantly start to move through those families, get them into permanent accommodation and not have the influx of families that we have seen due to section 21 evictions in the last number of years.
Councillor Brooks, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you very much, and thank you for all your work over the past couple of years. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. Councillor Carter.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Will the executive member for Economy, Transport and Sustainable Development inform the council the current status of the Home Office application for a certificate of proposed lawful development for use as a hostel at Mary Morris House, Shire Oak Road, Headingly?
Councillor Prior.
Thank you. So the certificate of lawful development is still before the local planning authority, and given this is a live submission, it would be inappropriate for me to comment in too much detail on this submission at this time. So the current status of that certificate of proposed lawful development for use or development is that it is undetermined. And this is due to the need for the city council to take into account the outcome of a related court hearing, a very similar one regarding another local authority area, and the need to take stock of the outcome of that and the implications for that in Leeds. In the meantime, the council has been actively engaging with the Home Office, local residents and stakeholders regarding this matter and informing them of the delays to that decision-making.
Councillor Carter, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, thank you, my Lord Mayor. In light of your opening remarks, and it's the day of kindness, I shall endeavour to be brief and kind to councillor Prior. I suspect he needs all the kindness he can get in the light of the legal judgment to which is referred, the Bella Tel Epping yesterday. Will councillor Prior commit to consulting all members of this council on the conditions proposed and needed surrounding the Mary Morris House application? Should his administration bend the knee to the Home Office? Yes or no?
Councillor Prior.
It's a legal process that we're in the middle of, so it's inappropriate to make a comment in that detail at this stage.
Councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll be kind to councillor Prior as well, asking a nice, easy question. In September, I asked the executive member the following question. In 2023, following extensive public consultation, a series of traffic regulation orders were agreed for the Ottley League Ward. These have still not been implemented. Why? He assured that some of the orders had been implemented and the rest were imminent. As no action has been taken on any of the orders, would the executive member care to indicate when, if ever, these tiros would be put in place?
Councillor Prior.
Delighted to answer on what is becoming the Councillor Prior Day. So work has begun on the first tranche of sites. Lining has been completed on Belmont Avenue, Claimant Grove, Moorfield Croft, Peacock Court, Suffolk Court, Town Street and Weston Lane. Some parked vehicles and poor weather has hampered some of the completion, but they do continue to return to the sites, and we are seeing progress here. A progress meeting is scheduled to confirm if any other action is needed to aid the completion of work, and we're currently considering implementing no parking cones and night working as well to finish that first tranche. Tranche two of works has only recently been issued, and contractors have committed to completing these work during the implementation of the remaining tranche one locations. Thank you.
Supplementary, councillor Campbell?
Yes. Could I ask the executive member to thank the highways department for their prompt action to undertake these works, which must have happened last night?
Councillor Prior.
I will pass on councillor Campbell's thanks.
Never known everyone be so caring to you. Councillor McCluskey.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can the executive member provide an update on the outcomes of the CQC inspection of the council's adult social care services?
Councillor Eary.
Yes, councillor McCluskey, happily I will do. I'm pleased to share that Leeds City Council received an overall rating of good from the Care Quality Commission, CQC, with a score of 70 out of 100. This result places Leeds above the current national average and firmly within the top third of councils inspected so far across the country. Importantly, there were no surprises in the report. The areas of development identified by CQC were already known to us and are being actively addressed through our ongoing improvement work, something that the inspectors themselves recognised as a strength. The inspection also highlighted a number of positive findings, including the strength of our partnership working, our focus on person-centred care and the dedication of our frontline staff. Leeds was commended for its commitment to supporting people to live independently and for the strong relationships we have built with health partners, voluntary organisations and local communities. The publication of this report provides us with a valuable opportunity to refresh and to strengthen our improvement plans. The Adults and Health Senior Leadership Team is now reviewing the detailed feedback and ensuring that clear actions are in place to address the areas identified within a continued focus on learning and continuous improvement. I also would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our adult social care teams for their tireless efforts, professionalism and compassion. Their work makes a real difference every day to the lives of people across Leeds. Can I also take this opportunity to thank councillor Venner as the Chair of Health and Wellbeing Board, councillor Andrew Scopes as the scrutiny for Adults and Health, and also my shadow councillor Caroline Anderson for their supporting role in speaking to CQC? You must have said some good things to them, so thank you. We are proud of this outcome, Lord Mayor, but we also are ambitious for further improvement. Our goal remains to ensure that every resident who needs care and support in Leeds receives the highest possible standard of service, delivered with dignity, respect and kindness. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Taylor.
Lord Mayor, the Doghouse Kitchen in Morley is a small cafe and a small business on the High Street. There's been a table and chairs outside this cafe for 20 years now. Now, due to a disgruntled neighbour making a complaint, they're now paying a £500 a year licence fee to Leeds City Council, just to have a table and two chairs outside. With the increase in capital gains, minimum wage, national insurance, energy bills, inflation, and now a £500 fee to Leeds City Council, how do we expect High Streets to survive?
Councillor Prior.
Thank you. So the Business and Planning Act 2020 sets charges for a pavement licence at £500 for initial application and £350 for an annual renewal. Now, in Leeds, we do recognise the pressures that a lot of small businesses are under, so we further discount that renewal charge by 50% to £175, and that's for businesses outside of the city centre. And this is because we do want to recognise what small businesses do and how we can help them and the pressures they're facing, particularly in hospitality. Now, the complaint about Doghouse Kitchen was made in July of this year and related to seating being placed and used on a Friday evening. There hasn't been a pavement licence that's been put in that we've received, and actually we've received no further complaints either. The Doghouse Kitchen does own a bar across the street, the Doghouse, which is on the opposite side of Queen Street, and this is a separately registered business. That one, the Doghouse Bar, has got a pavement licence since February 2024 and has attracted a small number of complaints from one local resident. And these relate to when furniture has blocked the footway or has been in use outside of licence times, and on each of those occasions, the owner has resolved these issues, having been contacted and advised. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor, supplementary? Thank you. Councillor Holroyd.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can the exec board member provide an update on the U1?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Absolutely delighted. Thank you so much for your question, councillor Holroyd. And I'm sure the Lib Dem benches are listening really closely to my words today.
50% of them.
Given there are only three of them in the chamber at the moment. But anyway, I know you've been really interested in the future of the U1 number plate, so I hope you will be pleased with the answer that I'm about to give to councillor Holroyd. So and as members are, will be already aware, at the start of this year, the disposal of U1 by the sale via a private dealer acting as an agent for the council was approved. Since that time, three private dealers were contacted to act on behalf of the council and secure offices for the plate. Two offers were secured, and the hire of the two has been accepted. U1 has been sold for £750,000. This is a step we have taken to help address our significant financial challenges. Years of cuts combined with increasing levels of demand for services, particularly within social care, have meant that we have needed to take such decisions. Although we will be sadly losing U1, I am delighted that the Lord Mayor's car will still be recognisable through the unique plate that we still have, which is L6EDS or Leeds, as they undertake their duties across the city and beyond. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Holroyd, do you have a supplementary? Why wasn't it Dan won? I don't... Okay, no supplementary? No? Okay, thank you. Councillor Harrington.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Question is, can the executive member for Climate, Energy, Environment and Green Space explain how he is measuring the impact of car parking charges in district centres?
Thank you. Councillor Rafik.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, highways officers will conduct surveys to measure the impact of new parking restriction and charges in district car parks. Their objective is to assess the scale and extent of any displacement to other areas. These surveys will take place over the year after the implementation and will benchmark current parking against patterns prior to the changes. As this is a recent change, this approach will give time for people's parking patterns and behaviours to become more established before any review can take place. Any specific road safety concern can be reported with more urgent consideration. Thank you.
Councillor Harrington, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, please, Lord Mayor. So thank you for that. As no research was done before the implementation, what matrix is being used to measure the impact on businesses, traffic issues affecting residents, particularly in Wetherby, rather than just how much money is being raised by this tax on parking?
Councillor Rafik.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Harrington, we are already seeing positive early signs in Wetherby. The car parks appear to be, remain well-used, and we are achieving a key goal, good space turnover, which helps local businesses by ensuring parking is available for shoppers and visitors throughout the day. It's important to note that the scheme is well-designed with fairness in mind, the charges are moderate, the first ever remains free, and we offer annual quarterly and weekly permits as well. This is a new scheme, and it needs adequate time to settle before we can make full objective assessment of its impact. Lord Mayor, and this goes to all the colleagues who are affected by the district parking charges, our commitment to working with local ward members is ongoing. We are dedicated to monitoring the implementation closely and addressing issues that arise collaboratively whenever possible. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Campbell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I thank councillor Cooper initially for her kind words in relation to the number of Liberal Democrat members who were in the chamber? Unfortunately, two of our members have serious medical issues at the moment and therefore are unable to attend. In July, the deputy leader of council advised members via email that a response to Leeds Bradford Airport's planning appeals that consideration will be needed to assess any further potential planning implications and the next steps. While this process is ongoing, it will be premature for us to make any further comments at this stage, but I felt many members would appreciate being kept up to date with the latest... I chase, this is councillor Downs, via emails in September and have yet to receive any further comments or replies. Given that nearly four months have passed, could he please give an update or a date by which we can expect one?
Councillor Prior?
So I can confirm that Leeds Bradford Airport have lodged a statutory review against the Secretary of State's decision on the outcome of two of the appeals against the refusal of certificates of lawful use or development. We're waiting confirmation from the High Court as to whether permission to proceed will be granted. As this challenge relates to the Secretary of State's decision, it's not appropriate to comment further at this stage, other than to say the council is an interested party in the proceedings. Leeds Bradford Airport have approached the city council as the local planning authority with a view to submitting a section 73 planning application to vary existing planning conditions. The airport's proposals are still under consideration and no formal application has yet been submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Campbell, supplementary? No supplementary? Thank you. Councillor Ali?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can the executive member update us on the work of the council's serious environmental crime team in bringing flight tippers to justice and what else is being planned to focus resources on tackling waste across Leeds?
Thank you. Councillor Rafik?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Ali for the question. In Leeds, we have established a dedicated team of enforcement officers to focus their work on tackling criminals and organised crime groups who are flight tipping in Leeds. City's innovative, serious environmental crime team, known as SETS, has been in place for three years now, is continuing to have a real impact by disrupting antisocial and criminal activity and bringing flight tippers to court. They work closely with police, environmental agency, DVSD and neighbouring authorities to target flight tippers. In the last year, the team has successfully won three court cases that resulted in suspended prison sentences, together with 600 hours unpaid work, as well as over a dozen other successful prosecutions ending in fines. There is a dozen more cases awaiting a court date. Last month, following a successful investigation and prosecution in court, a two-year suspended sentence was handed to a flight tipper who had been blighting communities in Eastern Park and herders with multiple flight tips. He was also ordered to do 300 hours of unpaid work and pay over £2,000 in costs to the landowners that had to clear up some of his dirty work. Over the last 12 months, the team has also issued over 40 fixed penalty notices to flight tippers and seized several vehicles that were being used for carrying waste illegally in flight tipping. The work of the team has helped inform Keep Britain Tidy's current fight, Flight Tipping Fortnite campaign, assisting other councils by leading good practice workshops and sharing the Leeds campaign to raise public awareness to check who they are paying to take their rubbish away. Leeds is proud to partner Keep Britain Tidy in this national campaign. To help with this, the team have successfully introduced the National Innovative Leeds Accredited Waste Carrier Scheme. This scheme is being used by dozens of legitimate, responsible waste disposal businesses across Leeds and enabling residents to choose someone to take their waste away, safe in the knowledge it won't be flight tipped. Work is underway to create a complementary, a new waste crime team for Leeds that will have a team of enforcement officers dedicated to ensuring all levels of waste crime are tackled and to support residents in their efforts to have a Leeds free of litter and flight tipping. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Ali, do you have a supplementary?
Just to thank you, Lord Mayor, to the executive member to go back to the SETS team and thank them personally for the hard work they are putting in.
Thank you. Councillor Carlisle?
Would the executive member work with the regional mayor and other local authorities to push national government to change national legislation such that income from speeding fines is retained locally to provide council with locally sourced funding for highways improvements, to better incentivise councils to install more speed cameras and hopefully to reduce speeding and make our communities safer?
Councillor Prior?
Just to thank you for the question. I know that the Labour mayor of West Midlands has been leading on some of this work and has already made that request of government. It's certainly something I would be really interested in, so I'll await and see what initial reply he gets, but it's certainly something I would like us to be looking into. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can the exec member update us on the effort to manage bikes in the city centre and particularly on managing bike traffic on Brigget?
Councillor Prior?
So we've made great progress on making pedestrians and cycling safer in Leeds through delivering a high number of protected cycle track and bike schemes, delivering the Beryl Bike Scheme, providing better access to active travel, and we need to ensure that cycling specifically interacts well with pedestrians in Leeds and particularly on some of our busiest pedestrianised streets such as Brigget. So at October's executive board, it was agreed to consult on the Brigget Action Plan, which recognises the high volume of complaints received about all bikes along Brigget, but particularly on e-bikes. The action plan proposes a wide ranging consultation exercise with a view to prohibiting cycling on Brigget within the central hours of the day and on the other pedestrianised streets. And this consultation should start in the next couple of weeks and I would urge all members to both make their views known as well as sharing the consultation wider. There is an average of 1,100 bikes per day on Brigget and the safety concerns are exacerbated by a tendency for delivery riders to use heavy and fast e-bikes and particularly a lot of e-bikes which have been modified and can go at phenomenal speeds. The police continue to focus on this illegal e-bike usage within the city centre and I'm really pleased to report that since early September, they have seized 53 illegal e-bikes. The vast majority of these are from food delivery riders. These are bikes which could have caused huge damage to someone had there been a collision and I think this is great work from the police to get those off the streets. So this consultation reference will include cycling groups, it will include delivery organisations and the general public. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hamilton, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, Lord Mayor. Can the exec member also provide an update on growth on Brigget and the progress we are seeing to improve the experience of residents and those visiting Leeds?
Councillor Prior?
Absolutely. I mean, the work to make Brigget safer for residents is all part of how busy Brigget is becoming. We are the busiest high street in the region. Footfall last Saturday was over 61,000 people, with weekly footfall on Brigget now over quarter of a million people a week. We're really looking forward to a busy Christmas and hoping to exceed last year's footfall totals and currently we're about level with the year to date footfall after having seen five years of footfall growth. We're seeing a large number of retailers come to Brigget. We've had New Balance, which is now open, Victoria's Secret opening this month, Uniqlo opening next year, Flannels last year and the flagship Zara, which was a £6 million investment in our city, which opened in 2024. I'm really pleased as well because this is something which comes up a lot, empty units on the high street is down to 12% and this was over 20% in the immediate aftermath of Covid, so we've made great progress in filling those empty shops and keeping our high street vibrant. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Buckley?
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. Given that social workers can take six months to assess an applicant for suitability for a dementia day centre placement, can the executive member for adult social care, active lifestyles and culture, please explain why there is not more use made of the trusted assessor scheme, which would allow these highly skilled people to carry out assessments almost immediately?
Councillor Reeve?
Thank you councillor Buckley for the question. Most social work assessments are completed within 28 days. There is a backlog which impacts people whose needs are lower level and where there is no risk associated with a wait. While on a waiting well list, we implement our waiting well protocol, which means that we keep in touch with people and check if their circumstances have changed or deteriorated and respond accordingly. When a social worker undertakes an assessment, they are looking at a range of issues, including what outcomes a person wants to achieve, any risks of safeguarding issues or any support that may be needed by a carer or a family member. The social worker will seek to see if the person's needs can be met through support available in the community or through assets and resources, which is part of the strength based approach we have adopted here in the council for some years. We will then put in place care and support which they are not able to meet through their own family or community or from local third sector organisations. We have been trailing the trusted assessor role, for example, to support hospital discharge for people who need a short term home care support or in working with carers' leads on carers' assessment, but this is not being rolled out more widely because we have strict data protection rules which limit who is able to access and input in our client information system. Our social workers also need to have access, full access from individuals to determine their financial contributions through a financial assessment, so we would not be able to delegate this responsibility to other organisations. Thank you councillor Buckley.
Councillor Buckley, do you have a supplementary? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate what you've just had about outside organisations, but the base day centre at U3 Court on Cronulla Bank is in one of the poorest parts of Leeds, being threatened with closure because of the lack of funding on the basis of lack of demand. There are plenty of, there will be plenty of demand if the trusted assessor already in, on site was indeed trusted to carry out these tasks almost immediately. Can she assure me that this will be put into place?
Councillor Reeve?
I think I've answered the question as to why we're doing it in certain circumstances and why we can't due to data protection. And I know, I believe we have got a conversation in the diary about this in coming weeks and I'm more than happy to take that conversation out of the chamber, but we have got protocols where we do use assessors, I've said, and the reasons as to why we don't and that's to do with data protection. Thank you councillor Buckley.
Thank you. Councillor Campbell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Would the executive member update council on works to repair, replace the concrete barriers on Leeds Road and West Cheven Road at Otley, which were highlighted as dangerous in a recent coroner's report?
Councillor Prior?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I was deeply saddened to hear that someone had lost their life in a crash in January of this year. My condolences are, of course, with their family. A full response has been sent to and received by the coroner and several alternative permanent solutions are being considered as part of an ongoing options appraisal. These options include the provision of a steel safety barrier, moorland markers post, rebound markers posts, bollards, a pedestrian guard rail and a treaf curbing, which is vehicle retainment. The treaf curb solution is currently the preferred option from an engineering highway limitation and aesthetic perspective for this specific location and the other sections along this length of the A660 where damage has occurred to the historical concrete post as well as the rail fencing. Similar detailed assessments will be undertaken at the other locations with defects and the appropriate solution implemented where possible. Concrete posts and rail fencing were used extensively in the past to assist in demarcating boundaries and highlighting and separating footways from carriageways in those certain locations, providing a sense of security for users of the footway. They are not a vehicular restraint systems and over time temporary barriers have been used to protect and highlight areas where damage has occurred. Ongoing maintenance proved challenging given site locations and limited alternative options. And I've asked the highways will keep you informed, councillor Campbell, of the progress of the assessment process along with their recommendations. Thank you.
Councillor Campbell, do you have a supplementary?
Yes. Can I thank the executive member for the answer and I appreciate that the concrete barriers as they exist are difficult to repair, if not impossible. But I do feel that it would be beneficial for residents if he was able to give an assurance that perhaps not this financial year but next financial year works would be undertaken.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Prior?
Sorry, I missed the last bit of the...
Would you care to repeat just the last little bit? I don't think councillor Prior called it. Could you just...
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Between the two of us, we're ragging. Can't hear, I can't hear.
Right, forgive me, forgive me, Lord Mayor. I would, it would be beneficial for members and residents if the executive board member could indicate, I appreciate not within this financial year, but if works will be undertaken in the next financial year.
Given the seriousness, I'll make sure works are done as quickly as possible.
Thank you councillor Prior and councillor Campbell for repeating. Councillor Wilson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can the executive member provide an update on Leeds 400, please?
Councillor Reeve?
Yes, I can councillor Wilson. So in 2026, Leeds will reach a historical milestone, marking 400 years since the city received its royal charter, which incorporated Leeds as a free borough and a body corporate and politic, bless you. This marked the beginning of Leeds' journey towards self-government, ultimately leading to its recognition as a city in 1832. In October, exec board approved the proposals to bring forward Leeds 400. The report outlined work undertaken to date, including the development of the Leeds 400 strategic group, the seven themes that will help frame the year and the dedicated branding and toolkit. During 2026, there are many key events and activities already planned aligned to the themes. These include Light Night, the Women's T20 Cricket World Cup, Christmas Market, Pride, West Indian Carnival, reopening of the Leeds Town Hall, Storytelling Festival, Make Music Day and many, many more that will link into a year of events happening in Leeds. The additional plans emerging include 400 Things to See in Leeds, 400 2023 artworks on display, 400 Leeds Fuddels, a Made in Leeds tag around the world, heritage walks and events, blue plaque unveilings, themed museum and gallery days and maybe even a Leeds 400 beer. I don't drink that beer. There is a partner launch event this month to set out our partnership approach, the seed themes and how we can encourage everyone to take part. Post-launch, we will be engaging with ward members and community committees to discuss Leeds 400 and in more detail and identify more opportunities to capture and share the story of Leeds and its cultural heritage. We have developed a toolkit, a website and a dedicated email address that will be circulating to members after the launch, along with a short film. We would like you to share these across your wards, organisation and communities to encourage people across the city to take part in whatever they want to be involved in. We want to encourage your local organisations and communities to play a part in Leeds 400, adding to the story of Leeds, past, present and future. Thank you.
Do you have a supplementary?
No.
Perfect, thank you. Councillor Ali?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Would the executive member review the way in which, in most cases, pedestrians are not able to access our waste sites, which disproportionately affects people in low income communities from disposing of waste responsibly?
Thank you. Councillor Rafik?
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. Leeds City Council successfully upgrades eight household waste and recycling centres spread across the city, unlike most councils. Despite the financial pressures, Leeds has continued to invest in all these sites being open seven days a week all year round. These include the extremely well-used sites in Seacraft and Middleton. These sites are part of a wider approach to helping residents dispose of their waste responsibly, including encouraging more reuse and recycling of unwanted items and waste. We have several ways in which someone can dispose of unwanted items and waste responsibly, including ordering a free bulky collection item, item collection of up to five large items. We have four free bookings a year available to low income households, thus up to 20 large items collected free from your doorstep. You can search for a responsible local waste disposal business using the Leeds Accredited Waste Carrier Scheme, utilise online selling site or donate items to charities such as utilise online selling site, or donate items to charities such as Revive Shops in Kirkstone Seacraft, or furniture through charities such as St Lou's Carers Charity and Leeds and Mortain Furniture Store, who will collect from homes. In terms of pedestrians' access to their H W R Cs themselves, this is something we would ideally want to facilitate, but there are very strict rules relating to the safe operation of these sites. Public vehicles and H G Vs operating these sites, meaning users can only exit their vehicle at designated spaces to dispose of waste. To create safe, supervised, additional and dedicated site access and walkways for pedestrians to the relevant parts of sites would require significant site redesigns and construction and disruption. The opportunity to review and implement changes that facilitate pedestrian access or use of facilities will be taken as and when a site is developed or should dedicated funding becomes available. In the last twelve months, the service had received eighteen formal complaints relating to H W R Cs, none of which were about the lack of pedestrian access. This probably reflects that the main use of H W R Cs is to bring larger items of waste that cannot be disposed of through the household curb, the household curb collection, curb side collection, and so would be unsuitable for carrying on foot other than for someone living very close by. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Ali, do you have a supplementary?
So we all agree Leeds has a problem with fly tipping. And so thank you to the sec team who are working so hardly on that. Recently, a resident of mine who went to the recycling centre with a bootful of waste wasn't allowed to access the site. So when someone's trying so hard to responsibly dispose of their waste, why are we making it so difficult for them?
Thank you, councillor Reeve.
Councillor Ali, as I said, you know, I explained the reasons for 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 difficult access for residents. But if there are any specific examples, I'm not aware of any complaints where somebody's been turned away. We are happy to look at that, but there are some logistical issues as they are in the way the sites are designed. It's something we want to develop, as I said, and make it accessible to residents, pedestrians. But if there is anything and anybody has been turned away, they're happy to talk to them and see if we can, you know, accommodate them. We never say we will not accommodate anybody. That's not how we work. Thank you.
Councillor Tudor.
Can the executive member provide an update on the redevelopment of the highways tower blocks on York Road, along with other REMA blocks within the city?
Councillor Lennox.
Thank you, councillor Tudor. So I'm delighted to advise that we've been working in partnership with Morgan Sindal to undertake a detailed design and buildability review of the highway scheme, and we're in discussion with the local planning authority to explore how we maximise the number of new homes delivered when the site is redeveloped. I'm also pleased to report the excellent progress that has been made on rehousing tenants living in other REMA blocks across the city, which have been agreed for redevelopment. To date, over ninety per cent of tenants have been successfully rehoused, and will continue to work with and support existing residents, and then look to secure and demolish the sites whilst we can consider future redevelopment options. Following the government's call for an increase in the delivery of affordable housing over the next ten years and the announcement of their thirty nine billion pounds of funding programme, we've been recently successful in securing three hundred thousand pounds of government funding to support pipeline development, pre-development and enabling work. And as part of this, we'll be undertaking some site capacity assessments for a number of potential future developments, including those REMA sites. The council remains fully committed to increasing the provision of affordable housing in our city, and has ambitious plans to deliver more council houses in the year ahead, in the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Tudor, do you have a supplementary?
No supplementary, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Caroline Anderson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can the executive member responsible for highways please advise what is being done to liaise with the responsible companies to expedite the repair of the large number of uneven utility covers on the highway, making not just an insufferable amount of noise for those living near an affected road, but causing dangerous driving by those trying to avoid them?
Councillor Prior.
And thank you. So the nuisance, the nuisance caused by damaged utility infrastructure, as described, is fully appreciated, and we do work closely with utility companies to ensure they repair them as soon as possible. Statutory undertakers and telecommunications companies, not the council, have a clear duty under section eighty one of the New Roads and Streetworks Act nineteen ninety one to maintain their apparatus in the public highway, having regard for the safety and convenience of traffic, the structure of the street, and the integrity of it too. And the owner of this has a duty to inspect and maintain their own equipment, including sunken and uneven utility covers. So in addition to the owners carrying out their own inspections, the Highway Authority can also identify and report defective apparatus that fails specification via an electronic system, which is called the street manager. Now, abiding by this process stipulated in the Code of Practice for the Coordination of Street and Roadworks two thousand and twenty three, timeframes are prescribed in the Code of Practice with a two-hour response stipulated for high-risk and dangerous apparatus, and twenty eight days for low-risk and non-dangerous reports. Works to make safe a high-risk report can be can be by the deployment of traffic management or using temporary materials. As part of the network management role, regular performance monitoring of the utility companies is undertaken, including the reporting of these and other defects, and performance issues more generally. We work closely with the owners to drive better performance and to escalate matters when required. If a specific utility cover or sunken frame is causing stress or noise intrusion, and the owner is known or safely identified, the services encourages direct contact with the relevant utility company. Alternatively, or where a company has failed to respond, we ask that people report these issues through the council's call centre or online forms to ensure that the issue is properly logged. The matter would then be dealt with by the network management team, who would contact the relevant utility themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Anderson, do you have a supplementary?
Given the timescales you've outlined there in that, I presume, is some sort of memorandum of understanding, how many, can you please advise how often those performance measures are actually met? So how many times do they meet the twenty eight days and the two-hour response?
Councillor Prior.
I would take goes beyond an MAU. It falls under section eighty one of the New Roads and Streetworks Act nineteen ninety one. For the rest of the answer, I'll have to get back to you because I don't have that information with me now. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of questions. Colleagues who've asked questions from twenty two to seventy seven will receive a written answer to their tabled question. I make the time fourteen thirty eight, so we will at this point take a comfort break. Can we all be back and ready to go by fourteen fifty? So ten minute comfort break and then ready to start sharp fourteen fifty. Thank you.
Dubieseated, and thank you everybody for getting back on time. So, we are on page twenty of the Order Papers, Agenda Item Six, Annual Report on Plans Panels, and seeing as we hadn't heard from you much just recently, councillor Prior.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and before I begin, I do want to take a moment to thank all members on our Plans Panel for their commitment and hard work over this past year. Members' dedication and willingness to dig into the detail, to listen, to deliberate, this has made a real difference to our city. And I too want to thank those with a keen interest to invest in our city as well. We are one of the fastest-growing cities in Europe, and while we work hard to ensure that growth is the right growth and inclusive growth, I hope that everyone who engages in our planning system finds our processes fair and transparent. Now, this past year has been a full one. It's been a year where each of our Plans Panels have faced complex and sometimes difficult issues. Members have had to balance the preservation of our heritage with the need to build for the future. Members have wrestled with questions about affordable housing, about climate resilience, and through it all, members have done the work that helps keep Leeds a vibrant and forward-looking city. Now, as part of that work, there's involved close engagement with the Leeds Local Plan, a plan that will guide development across this great city all the way to 2042. Because good planning decisions don't just shape buildings, they shape communities. They shape the neighbourhoods we call home and the opportunities we do create for the next generation. And that's why our local plan aims to set out a sound, consistent, and fair approach to development. It's about improving the look and feel of our city, yes, but also about ensuring that families can find the homes that they can afford, that businesses can grow, and that our local economy can continue to thrive. Because, let's be honest, the housing crisis we face today is one of the defining challenges of our time. Too many people are struggling to find a place they can truly call home. Too many young families are priced out of the communities where they grew up. And the work we do here in this building, every decision, every plan, every project, all of that plays a part in addressing that challenge. So, looking ahead to the next period, we know there's important work to do. We'll see twenty-two Plans Panel meetings alongside five DPP Panels, and we'll be entering a period of real transformation in planning with the new Planning and Infrastructure Act set to change the way we make decisions, and a change I hope will help Leeds go from strength to strength. So with that, I look forward to hearing from members, and I move the report. Thank you.
Councillor Heslerwood.
Lord Mayor, comrades, I am delighted to be seconding the annual planning report, and would like to extend my thanks to all members of City Plans Panel for another year of thoughtful and diligent work in considering complex planning applications. I would also like to thank our officers for their continued support and expertise which has been invaluable to the panel's decision-making. This year, we've remained focused on ensuring that development in Leeds delivers the maximum benefit for our communities. City Plans Panel are meticulous in ensuring full green space contributions are made by developers and affordable housing requirements are met. Both are key priorities for our city. Leeds has built the most new affordable homes of any city outside London in the last five years, delivering almost seventeen thousand new homes in total, with a higher proportion than socially rented homes, sorry, a higher proportion than the national average, and the city centre is no exception to that. We have a new building just off Saxton Lane, which will contain two hundred and four apartments, and all will be available at affordable rent. The development will encourage family living in the city centre, something we're keen to encourage, with apartments ranging from one to four bedrooms. And Leonora House, named after our most famous suffragette who has pride of place in the council chamber behind you there, Lord Mayor. Leonora House is a high-quality development offering affordable homes. The design incorporates suffragette colours and the city's rich history, and reflects Leonora's legacy as a feminist pioneer. So pleased I got a suffragette into a planning speech. Leonora House also connects onto the award-winning Leeds Pipes Low Carbon Network, and it joins one thousand eight hundred and fifty homes in Leeds currently benefiting from reduced bills and sustainably sourced heat from the network. Last month, we heard from the government about the exciting New Town Proposal for the South Bank, which could bring forward up to thirteen thousand new homes, with the potential for up to forty per cent of those homes to be affordable. Whilst this proposal is still in early stages, I want to reassure members and the public that City Plans Panel will continue to champion high-quality development, ensuring that new homes are supported by green space, transport infrastructure, and community facilities. Over the last five years, Leeds has been responsible for around one point five per cent of all new homes built in England. If Leeds' record was replicated nationwide, the result would be three hundred thousand new homes each year, which would put the country within sight of the three hundred and seventy thousand annual target for housebuilding. I think you'll all agree, council, that Leeds leads the way. Thank you.
Councillor Lamb.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, as leader of the opposition, I'm regularly briefed on confidential matters. I'm aware this does not happen in every council, I'm aware it's a great privilege, and I imagine officers and members on all sides would agree that this is something I have always taken incredibly seriously in my role. So, when I break a confidence, it is with a heavy heart, but because I think it's important. I'm also aware what I'm about to tell you is not unique knowledge to me, there are several members in the chamber who know it, but all members should know, and all the people of Leeds should know. Last week, I attended Development Plans Panel. It was moved from an online public meeting to an offline workshop, which didn't seem that significant in itself until we got to the meeting. We were discussing the council's review of the Green Belt as part of the local plan update. As part of that, we were told that the judgment of officers of this council is that ninety per cent, ninety, nine zero per cent, of the Green Belt in Leeds is likely to have to be reclassified as grey belt. The reason we were told this was being kept private for now was because it would be very alarming to the people of Leeds. You're damn right it would. They should be very alarmed, and they should know. The only way to stop this is to change the government guidance. This is as a direct result of new guidance the government introduced for the Grey Belt. It's not my working out, it's not my assumption, I agree with it, any of you could apply it in the same way, and you would come to the same conclusion. Councillor Lewis has seen it in his own ward with a battery energy storage solution, just as we did in our ward at Bramham. We are going to see Green Belt reclassified time and time and time again, and are extremely vulnerable now to speculative development of all types in our city. This is a far cry from the theory it would be small parcels of disused land, little car parks and garages and the like. This is ninety per cent of our Green Belt. There is no protection for small settlements anymore. This is serious stuff, and the only way it changes is by all of us, and I hope councillor Prior will accept the offer I made at DPP, that we will work together and lobby your government to change this guidance urgently. And that's why people need to know, because waiting is not going to help us, they need to be on the phone, writing, emailing to their MPs to tell them, this is not acceptable. This is yet another thing this government promised not to do and are doing. They're letting us down again. We must protect our Green Belt, Lord Mayor. I'm sorry to have to break that confidence, but I'm absolutely convinced it is in the public interest to do so, and it is the right thing to do. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Acta.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor, let's keep it kind. As we reflect on the works of North and East Plans Panel over the last municipal year, I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the scale, complexity, and the significance of the development we have considered, as well as thanking officers for their support to both myself as a chair and also panel members. Finally, I would like to thank panel members for their scrutinising and systematic approach to ensuring all applications approved by this panel are of the highest standard. One of the most notable cases we have considered this year is Hiltop Works situated in Berzlingtop, an area of historical interest. This site has a rich industrial heritage, however, has stood derelict for a prolonged period. The application proposes the development of three hundred and seventy-one homes across five blocks ranging from six to ten storeys. The panel considered the proposal for taking into consideration the impact of high-rise flats and lack of green space, however, where this application differed from the retention of historical features such as mill chimney alongside the delivery of affordable homes on-site, which after carefully consideration led to a board approving the application subject to Section 106 agreement. The board also progressed a further two major schemes as part of East Leeds' extension, the middle and northern section totalling nearly nine hundred new homes between them. The proposal for the middle section will see homes, variety of size, homes being bought forward, fifteen per cent of which will be affordable. All homes will be high environmental standards, including all being solely electric, with a strong green space provision on-site. The northern section, oh sorry, the northern section will again provide fifteen per cent affordable homes, as well as over hundred and fifty being accessible, while also meeting the same environmental and green space standards. These decisions demonstrate the panel-balanced approach to not only supporting housing delivery, but doing whilst safeguarding heritage assets, promoting environmental responsibility, as well as ensuring the homes provide meet needs of diverse range of residents. I look forward to the year ahead of where our work continues to shape the future of city, and I am proud of the role this panel plays in delivering high-quality, sustainable development across the north and east region of our city. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Councillor Barry Anderson.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I refer to item six on the agenda. I came into politics to represent the views of my residents, who find bureaucracy bumbling, and planning is one of the worst contributors. One such time bomb we face is the Planning and Infrastructure Bill. How fit is this council and the city to take this bill on and integrate it into our policies procedures? For example, the government talk about cutting red tape. Well, that's a cue for removing the rights of the public to object to things being done to them, because this council will do more to our residents rather than with our residents if they follow the government's agenda through to the nth degree. There's also talking of, one of the other outputs is going to be reduced transparency, there's going to be more delegated decisions done. Now, I'm not against delegated decisions being made, but the more delegated decisions mean that there is less chance for residents to get their day before a Plans Panel to explain their viewpoint, because we're all human, and we sometimes miss things, and sometimes some of these residents bring to our attention issues that planners have, well, let's just say they've not reflected back fully in the report. Reducing scrutiny, planners are human, they make mistakes. So what are the safeguards that the government are going to put in place to try and help you deliver your policies here? They're also going to reduce engagement, they're going to try and get things done quicker. Well, quicker means that there's going to be less chance of us being able to represent our residents effectively in terms of what we're doing, and we're not going to be acting in the best interests of all of the public. Now, we heard Kenstorf Prior mention the housing crisis. The housing crisis is because of bad policy, building the wrong homes in the wrong locations. If the public, then another thing that the government are going to do is introduce higher fees. If the public are paying more fees, should they not expect better performance? You've heard about the Green Belt problems we're going to have. Finally, what has happened to the development management peer challenge? Where is the action plan? Where are the internal reforms? Where is an explanation of the new direction of the public service? Where is the new workforce plan, or revised workforce plan? Where is the improved communication plan? Where are you with the reviewing of the planning committees? On a separate but related matter, as someone who's on two Plans Panels and substitutes on a third, there are often issues that come up where we don't have a policy, or a procedure, or access to the information available. Either the panel chairs or the lead planning officer agree to take these issues away, but where are they going? Because we never get any feedback on Plans Panels as to what's happened to these things. The example I would give you, the number of student accommodation in the city, we keep asking, how many is it? At what point do we reach a limit? Getting planning is the best way of getting growth in our city, but I'm not convinced this council is capable of doing so. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Ray.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's been a pleasure to chair the South and West Plans Panel for another year, working efficiently and effectively to make determinations on the day and to limit the number of deferrals, saving both the public money, officer time, and applicants and objectors unneeded delay. I want to thank the panel members, who I think have now become used to me reminding them that questions are in the questions section and not for comments. That goes to all members of the panel on all sides of the chamber, but also to officers and to members of the public, applicants, who have engaged with the panel this year. The work of the panel in the last year has been characterised by thoughtful and impactful decisions which will shape the south and west of Leeds for many years to come. For example, the panel reviewed the redevelopment of the former Wheatwood Police Station on Oltley Road. This scheme involved the demolition of the existing building and the creation of a new residential development. Key considerations were made to the design and character of the development, accessibility, impact on the highway, housing mix and affordable housing viability. The latter point was a matter of significant debate, resulting in the only deferral we made all year, so that we could hear from the district valuer and have more information how an overage clause is work, an important tool in the current development climate due to more applicants claiming viability issues as a reason not to fill many of the requirements they would otherwise have. Ultimately, this application demonstrated the panel's commitment to balance development with community priorities and benefits, environmental responsibility, and good design on a challenging site. Green space provision also continues to be a consideration in many of the applicants, balancing and meeting national targets and legislation to ensure the development incorporates the right amount of space and tree planting, as well as ensuring that the development is sensitive to the character of the surroundings and the landscape, and increasing pressure on viability as another issue of development concern. Many of the other applicants in the past year have shown the need for attention to a wide range of planning considerations on development matters, to maintain a high standard and strong track record when assessing schemes focusing on material considerations, which is not a mean feat when faced with significant opposition from members of the public and concerns which do not fall within the planning regime. South and West Plans Panel, I'm sure, will continue to focus on ensuring these schemes provided are responsive to local needs around the factors such as affordable housing, critical work as we try to support Leeds reach its affordable housing targets. I look forward to continuing the work with this panel over the coming year.
Thank you. Councillor Maloney.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to begin by expressing my sincere thanks to all members and officers who've supported and welcomed me in my new role as Chair of the Development Plans Panel. I also want to acknowledge the contribution of my predecessor, councillor Gavani, whose leadership helped steer the panel through a period of significant change, both locally and nationally. His work was instrumental in guiding our response to major developments such as the strategic housing market assessment and the revision of the National Planning Policy Framework. In January, the panel considered the proposed amendments to the National Planning Policy Framework and assessed their implications for Leeds. The council has welcomed revisions which represent a much-needed modernisation of the planning system, making it more responsive to the needs of a growing and evolving country. The revised NPPF aligns closely with our ambitions here in Leeds. It supports efforts to tackle the housing crisis by unlocking store developments, introducing the concept of grey belt land, to enable high-quality, sustainable housing with infrastructure and with green space, and places greater emphasis on climate action by giving more weight to environmental considerations in planning decisions. Crucially, it also empowers local authorities like ours, giving us greater flexibility in how we meet housing targets and enhancing community involvement through neighbourhood plans. The panel has also been actively engaged in shaping the Leeds Local Plan, which will guide the development across the city to 2042. The consultation received over twenty thousand responses from around eleven thousand individuals and organisations. This feedback covered a wide range of issues, from the city's future character and land to use-specific site proposals submitted by residents, developers, and landowners. Planning officers are now analysing these responses alongside the evidence-based refinement of revision, policies, and site allocations. Once the draft plan is prepared, it will be subject to further public consultation before being submitted to the planning inspectorate for examination and ultimately adoption. I look forward to continuing this important work with colleagues from across the chamber. Thank you.
Councillor Harrington.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm speaking on the Plans Panel Annual Report. Planning committees or Plans Panels... Planning committees or plans panels in Leeds are a vital part of the planning ecosystem, allowing transparency and robust scrutiny of presented applications, be they big or small, mundane or controversial. All residents of Leeds are subject to planning procedures without exception. However, where the system falls is in the matter of cross-border applications. Nestled in God's Own County, Leeds is fortunate to be surrounded by glorious green fields. If only there were a name for this, green belt, that surrounds the city and separates us from becoming a massive urban mess. As highlighted by Counselor Lam, the green belt is under threat from the current government and stands to be all but wiped out. Our green and pleasant land could well become an endless hellish sprawl of development as settlements crash into one another seemingly unchecked. We are already experiencing the start of this in the Wetherby Ward, fuelled by this government's foolish decision to effectively treble North Yorkshire's housing targets overnight, leaving them exposed to speculative and inappropriate developments. Wetherby Ward now has two applications right on our doorstep for over three hundred additional homes. The application beyond SPOFTHill in North Yorkshire originally came up in 2018 and was rejected by a planning inspector. This one has come back along with another on Sickling Hall Road. So what is the issue with these develops, developments? Well, my Lord Mayor, there would be three hundred additional dwellings within North Yorkshire addresses and council tax obligations. Three hundred dwellings worth of pressures put on Wetherby facilities, as we heard from the deputation earlier, such as schools, roads, doctors, dentists and supermarkets. Three hundred dwellings of residents that neither I nor Counselor Lam will be able to support with their issues that will inevitably arise. And likewise, Counselor Peraskos from Harrogate in North Yorkshire, who will represent the residents, won't have any jurisdiction or influence into things that happen within Leeds City Council services irrespective of how closely we work together. Now, members elsewhere in this chamber may well be thinking, what's this got to do with me? Make no mistake, this impacts you too. Cross-border applications will become more prevalent all around the city. My guess is that Geisley and Rorden, Horstford, Cavali and Farsley, Kipax and Metley, Farnley and Whirtley and Morley could all see an increase in applications and we need a consistent and coherent approach. I'm afraid the duty to cooperate doesn't go far enough and I would like to have panels explicitly involved in discussing cross-border applications so that the council's response is crystal clear to our residents. To close, my Lord Mayor, I would like to say to my residents living in Wetherby, both Counselor Lam and I are totally opposed to the Harrogate Road and Sickling Hall Road developments and will do everything we can to prevent them from going ahead. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Counselor Stables.
Lord Mayor, we welcome this report on the work of the Plans Panel. I sit on both the South and West and the Developments Plans Panel and it's an honour to do so. It isn't easy to make the right decisions based on planning criteria which will benefit many people in the long run, when you know that short term it can be very difficult for some of the nearby neighbours, particularly when they're really struggling with life. Generally, I think we do get to the right conclusion. I share all the concerns that my Wetherby colleagues have just mentioned about cross-border issues and I've also been talking to senior officers about this issue over the last, last few weeks and months. And there is a real concern in Wetherby around, with the residents, about where this may lead in term to potentially up to a thousand new dwellings on the border in North Yorkshire of people who will consider themselves Wetherby residents and use all the facilities, the GPs, the schools and of course the roads network in Wetherby. And we've heard earlier today from the deputation, the issues we already have in Wetherby, serious issues with road safety. And this, these new applications for, at the moment hundreds, but in the future up that potentially thousands of new homes on the border of Wetherby will be, will cause huge implications on road safety in Wetherby. In addition to that, I want to make, talk about another issue, which is the question of viability, which has come up, Counselor Ray's already mentioned it today and it keeps coming up in Plans Panel. And this is affecting the deliverability of affordable housing across Leeds. We all need the right houses in the right places that is already been mentioned today and we'd all recognise there is a shortage of affordable housing across Leeds, which includes both affordable to buy and also to rent. The council has a policy on the percentage of affordable housing that a developer must deliver dependent on whether it's in the city centre or outer area. However, increasingly, we're seeing developers bring applications for housing developments that tick all the boxes except the one for affordable housing. Some have a lower percentage than that's required by the council and some have none. Why? Because developers state that once they've delivered all the other requirements on the site, there's not enough money left to hit their profit threshold. So it's tested by the district valuer, who sometimes agree with the developer. We're then left in a quandary. Should we allow the development, which may deliver hundreds of good houses, green space and biodiversity net gain, or should we refuse it as not enough affordable housing? We're generally advised to allow the development because we would be likely to lose appeal. My big concern is that this may, this unless there becomes, unless legislation is brought by the government to make it compulsory for house.
Thank you, Counselor Stables. Thank you, Counselor Stables. Counselor Stables, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Brooks.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm so pleased to see all the incredible work to improve our city's infrastructure, delivering improvements that not only improve the quality of services in the city but also have a positive impact on the environment. The Leeds Pipe Scheme in particular is having a huge impact on energy security in Leeds and that's why I'm delighted to see the expansion of the scheme to the level part blocks in my ward. The scheme is providing a real benefit to residents in Leeds. It's providing a cheaper, more consistent price for energy for Leeds residents, one that's not dictated by the ever fluctuating global energy market. The service is providing residents with a heating system that's cheaper than gas and electrical heating systems. And connected homes receive instant and unlimited hot water without any need for boilers or tanks. It's a service that's already improving the daily lives of residents in Leeds. Every Leeds resident has a right to be able to affordably heat their homes. This scheme is supporting that right by ensuring more affordable and consistent bills to residents. And that's why I look forward to the renewal of LDO three being taken to the next executive board, which will further enable the scheme to expand in order to continue this, to continue to deliver this fantastic service to even more residents in Leeds. This is not only making heating your home more affordable, but is also having a positive impact on our environment. By putting use to non-recyclable household waste to heat homes, we're ensuring that we have a stronger, more sustainable circular economy. The scheme alone in 2024 saved five thousand nine hundred and forty-five tonnes of carbon and further expanding the scheme will only increase our savings going forward. I thank the officers for the continued work on this scheme and I look forward to seeing the extension of the LDO three being brought forward to the next executive board. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Counselor Carlin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As a relatively new member of Development and City Plans Panel with only eight years under my belt so far, I'm aware, often reminded that some members have been there some time longer, I am keen to comment on this report. It's been five years that members on the Development Plans Panel have been discussing the local plan update. Firstly, as local plan update one, which quite rightly focused on the climate emergency, with consultations receiving strong support for that focus and for the specific policies proposed. Members of the committee were all in agreement that these policies were urgently needed and should be enacted as soon as possible and there was disappointment when we needed to delay these following a ministerial statement in 2023. So now it's being pursued as one single plan with a range of objectives that are welcome tools to those of us on Plans Panels. As well as those original policies which look to ensure Leeds grows in a sustainable way, it also aims to deliver significantly more affordable housing in all communities across Leeds, pushing even further than Counselor Heselwood mentioned that this Labour Administration's success of building the most affordable homes of any city outside London over the last five years. And it continues to be focused on Brownfield first, as was the previous plan where eighty percent of development was delivered on previously developed land. But what I've been most keen to focus on in discussing this plan is how we can use planning policies to deliver new infrastructure and amenities to better support our city. Development often comes with concerns it could oversubscribe local services, for example health services, schools, highways, networks, public transport, et cetera. But careful assessment of development sites, as had been carried out in making this plan, could be a powerful tool in supporting key infrastructure ambitions, supporting our city, town and district centre economies and helping bring new services to areas that desperately need them. And significant changes in how we manage transport regionally as well as further devolution for West Yorkshire can also help us bring this forward. One example's mass transit, where aligning the plan to our ambition can help unlock new areas for development and employment as well as provide regeneration to communities through significantly improved transport connections. And outside of the mass transit routes, the opportunity bus franchising brings gives us more flexibility to improve bus networks, both to better serve new sites and improve services for existing communities, businesses and the wider area. Lord Mayor, if nothing changes, it can't get better. So this administration are right to use this plan to direct growth in the right way and to help provide the improvements our communities need. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor First.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Following on from Counselor Carlin's speech where he talked about where Leeds is close behind London in terms of delivering affordable homes, it was, as I've mentioned in this chamber before, that Leeds was the first city or the first authority after the London County Council to establish green belt in its development plan back in nineteen fifty-one, having London done it during the Second World War. And the nature of where we stand at the moment is that we've just had a massive consultation on the call for sites, the sites that have been proposed by developers and some sites proposed by this authority and others, to therefore put forward where we're going to look in the future for further housing that's going to come forward. And as part of that, there was a key question, a key question that was answered by many people, which is, should this authority take forward a review of the green belt? And I look forward to seeing how high the no is when it comes and finally is released because the nature of that actual discussion comes to the point that whether this council then takes forward a green belt review. Because we actually are in a context now that actually means that the Wild West of planning that we now find ourselves in with grey belt being found out to be more when the, when the rabbit is pulled out of the hat, we realise it actually is something that could really be tantamount to absolute destruction of our green and pleasant land here in Leeds. And I know people may say that that's extreme in saying that. The nature of it is, it's absolutely true when, if Counselor Lam is correct, ninety percent of the green belt in our city is under potential threat. And the nature of where we are in terms of this situation and where we play ourselves, the mention here about the fact that it gives the council greater flexibility, yes, to destroy the land that's been cherished for very, very many, many years and centuries that has never been developed and never been looked into. And the former looking at that even further is the fact that we have to be very careful where we stand with that. We've talked about the development of a new town on the south bank. Well, it isn't a new town, but we're using the phrase and half of it's already been built, so it's very unclear exactly what and where the government is actually claiming or whether they're claiming what's already been developed or not. So the nature of where we are in that particular point is actually quite interesting. But when we are discussing issues at Plans Panel repeatedly, I am lucky to be a member of the South and West Plans Panel and I substituted for some of my colleagues on the North and East Plans Panel in recent past and we discussed sites like Red Hall and others, the nature of it is that we must be absolutely looking to preserve our green belt, not because it is scientifically proven that that land should be preserved, but to absolutely ensure that people want to continue to live in these beautiful areas of our city and that we can be ambitious that anyone in this city can then go and live there. But we must not do it at the detriment to destruct and destroy the land that we all love, explore, walk round and want to enjoy for centuries to come. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Counselor Day.
I didn't hear you call my name, I didn't know who you, who you were inviting. Anyway, thank you, Lord Mayor, as you've now called me, I will start. As Chair of SEAC, it's encouraging to read in the Plans Panel reports over the last year that more and more developments are promoting climate resilience in their applications. And there are several examples in the report of schemes that are taking that approach, one of which is the East Leeds Extension. As Counselor Actar described, the North and East Plans Panel approved five hundred and twenty-eight dwellings in the middle quadrant that are completely gas-free with all houses heated by air source heat pumps and all of them with electric vehicle charging points. And the same, I think, has been approved in March in the northern quadrant, again, all gas-free and all air source heat pumps and EV chargers, which means that that area of Leeds is set to be one of the most climate resilient parts of the city. A key piece of infrastructure, infrastructure there is the East Leeds Orbital Road, which has received much praise for incorporating sustainability as a feature. That includes fully segregated cycling and British Horse Society award-winning bridle paths as well as more than thirty thousand trees planted for biodiversity and habitat growth. And it was great to see that that work was referenced by the judges in the Nature Twenty Thirty campaign when this council received the award for Green Council of the Year a couple of months ago. The report also describes the hedgerow scheme, which was approved at City Plans and will refurbish a large existing building. This has to be our preferred method when applications come before us seeking demolition and we should always ask, is it necessary? It's absolutely essential that new developments prioritise climate adaptation, incorporate green and blue infrastructure and make good use of the requirement to improve biodiversity. Our climate is changing rapidly. You must all be aware that we're in November now and we're seeing summer flowers still there across our city. At yesterday's SEAC, we discussed the heating in the city report and the effect on people's health that living in unsuitable accommodation can have. Planning has an important part to play in preventing future problems. We need to be very mindful when approving applications that we are supporting the creation of places that make the very best use of resources and are comfortable for future occupants. Thank you.
Counselor Carter.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. You just don't get it, do you really? You're caught again keeping our constituents, your constituents, the people of Leeds in the dark. Counselor, Counselor First, Counselor Lam said, the statistics, he said, they weren't his, they were the planning departments. Ninety percent of green belt could be lost or could be categorised as grey belt because planners have said for months, they have no idea what grey belt means because the government don't know what grey, grey belt means, they just throw it around. And then we come to this position and your party, your planning committee decide in camera not to tell the people of Leeds. Shame on you. And it isn't the first time, issue after issue. Have a look at what's happening in the court this week, many other things as well. Shame on you. You cannot keep the people in the dark. That's why people are so angry with government and politicians of all persuasions, because they are sick and tired of being treated like that. You need to tell them exactly where we're at. Counselor Lam has made a very good offer to you. We gladly work with you to lobby your government to change this planning guidance and I urge you to take that offer up. Otherwise, what happened in the previous years and the, and the local plan that's just coming to an end will be as nothing compared to what you have to face up to in this coming local plan. And that's a pity because I thought that with the first consultation and all those thousands of people who came back making comments, we're actually learning something here. But what do you do? You take the bad news in camera. Again, it will not do. We're used to, to asset stripping in my ward and in Puddsy Ward now, but this is environmental asset stripping on the worst possible scale and it has to be stopped. The offer's been made, if you don't take it, it's your own fault, but the people of Leeds aren't going to be left holding the baby.
Counselor Dobson. Sorry, apologies. Counselor Malacca, apologies.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It was good to see the Plans Panel report, a summary of the complex issues addressed by Plans Panel over the year. Delivering new affordable housing is one of the key challenges faced by panels and one of the key priorities for this council last. one of the key priorities for this council as we seek to tackle the housing crisis. We're proud of our record, and we are 2,900 new affordable homes we have delivered in Leeds over the past five years. This has been either through our own direct involvement through registered providers or as set out in the annual Plans Panel report. Through the implementation of planning policy via section 106, the 2,900 is a higher number of affordable homes delivered than any other core city, and is set to continue with a further 2,300 over the next three years. Our council housing growth programme is responsible for over 1,600 of those new homes, all for social rent. Looking back, one of the first new council home schemes completed by this council was in 2016, at a land off East Park Road in Richmond Hill, which is my ward. This saw new council homes delivered on brownfield land, replacing Victorian back-to-backs that were demolished 20 years previously. The new street railing clause was named by the people of Richmond Hill Primary. Then in 2020, we saw 32 more new council homes in naval schemes in Osmumthorpe, again on brownfield land. Both schemes build to a high standard with energy efficiency measures and part of our work to build new council homes to meet the needs of residents and help to tackle the housing crisis. This Plans Panel report is encouraging, as it shows that work continues and underlines this council's determination to keep delivering the new affordable and social housing this city truly needs. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Dobson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've scrapped what I was going to say in light of what councillor Lam's brought to our attention this afternoon. And I'm just thinking back, and it was the 8th of July 2024, four days after the last general election, when I learnt a new word, grey belt. And I decided I'd do a bit of a deep dive into grey belt, and at the time I came away somewhat reassured, because it was going to be that sort of land that was hard to categorise, somewhere between brownfield and green belt sites, the sort of scrubby, small pockets of land we all have in our communities. And I actually came away quite reassured around that. But to hear today that up to ninety per cent of current green belt land could be redefined as grey belt really rings a lot of alarm bells, and it should for all of us for different reasons. Councillor Prior, in his opening remarks, made the point that young people and people wanting to get on the property ladder won't be able to live in their communities. But if you look where we represent, Garforth, Swillington, Gray and Little Preston, if those communities are swamped up with housing, they won't exist. There'll be no community to aspire to live in, because we will create urban sprawl. And I think the colleagues who represent in the city areas who desperately want to see regeneration of housing stock, new housing, affordable housing, with the regeneration that comes with that through infrastructure levy, you won't get it. If you hand over lock, stock and barrel, pretty much less than ten per cent, the Green Belt to developers, you will not see a brick laid in those areas. You won't. Don't think you will, because they will be looking for the easy wins on the current, soon to be, green sites. One thing, Alan, I admire your optimism, but don't rely on the MPs. During the call to sites process and afterwards, I actually asked what contribution the MP for Leeds East had made to any of the 84 sites under consultation for the call to sites. None, zilch, nothing. So I do think we need to work together, but please don't rely on anybody outside this chamber. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Dawn Siri.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I haven't been appointed to the North and East Plans Panel for very long, but I want to say how honoured I am to represent my group and to be part of this important committee. The members of the panel are always respectful in their discussions, and councillor Actar provides a steady and fair leadership as Chair. The report before us today describes the role of the panel as dealing with contentious sites that can often cause local concern. It is an essential part of the planning process to listen carefully, ensuring that all concerns are considered within the framework of planning law. I think that's an excellent summary of what we do. The decisions we make are often difficult, but I genuinely believe that they are made thoughtfully and with full consideration of the evidence and the law. However, I do want to express my concern about the recent changes to planning legislation by central government and the potential impact these could have on our green spaces. At one of the panels I attended, there was a particularly contentious application for a battery storage site. Having visited the location and read through the many objections, I came to the conclusion that this was not a suitable site for development, and it was clear to me that it was an important green space. It was interesting to see councillor James Lewis attend the panel to speak against the proposal. He rightly made the point that this was a premier green space and did not meet the new grey belt criteria, despite the officer report suggesting otherwise. We are now being told that under the new planning laws, a significant proportion of green belt sites in Leeds could be reclassified as grey belt and so be opened up for potential development, and this is a deeply concerning prospect. It's deeply worrying and reminds me of something councillor Richard Lewis once said during the debate at the Site Allocation Plan. He remarked that some green field isn't worth saving. His constituents in Pudsey clearly disagreed, and that was reflected in the result at the ballot box. I do hope that the current councillor Lewis will defend all green spaces, not just in his own ward. Of course, we all recognise the urgent need for more housing of all types, but it has to be in the right places. Once a green belt site is developed, it is lost forever. We have a duty to balance growth with protection and ensure that future generations inherit not just homes, but also the green spaces, character and environment that make our communities what they are. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
councillor Givarny.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As a member of the City Plans Panel, many of the applications we consider relate to brownfield development, something you think the opposition, if you listen to the opposition, we don't do, but we do, both in and around the city centre. This annual report sets out some of the key schemes considered by City Plans Panel recently, and I'll highlight just two of them. There's a co-living scheme, already mentioned, I think, by councillor Day, 42 the hedgerow, which received approval in November last year. Co-living is an emerging form of long-term residential accommodation in the housing market. There are existing examples in London, but it's a relatively new concept for Leeds. It's targeted at the recent graduate market, and it's very much like some of the purpose-built student accommodation that we've had, only costing a lot more and a bit more luxurious, and new incoming key workers in the city centre who don't want to rent on their own or know people to house share with. Another one is, sorry, this 42 hedgerow development is a refurbished office building, which will form 230 studios with areas of shared internal and external amenities. It was a challenging application for the panel with additional technical information considered to ensure we still applied acceptable levels of residential amenity and that the scheme contributed to policy requirements for affordable housing and infrastructure requirements. Another significant city centre brownfield application was considered in March for the former Tetley Brewery site. This is a huge scheme that will see multiple blocks of flats ranging from six to 15 storeys brought forward alongside the new air park. This is a significant scheme, and it's a vital part of the regeneration of the South Park. It will be exciting to see how this links into the new town development that our white paper seeks to welcome later in this meeting. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Lim Buckley.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Having read the Chief Planning Officer's report, there are certainly some very positive developments that have taken place across the city. I was interested to read the proposals for the next phase of the Tetley Brewery site, which has already greatly improved following the previous development to enhance the area. It has certainly changed since I worked at Tetley's Brewery some years ago. However, I do have some concerns regarding the planning and infrastructure bill currently progressing through Parliament, and the way this will affect the planning system with regard to the composition of planning committees. With the introduction of the National Scheme of Delegation and what this involves, there is the potential loss of democratic oversight in decision-making. Certainly, there is the prospect of greater efficiency, but what looks good, but what looks and sounds good on paper does not necessarily happen in practice. In particular, through streamlining the Plans Panel's workloads, this could reduce the opportunities for local input. Another concern is the government initiative introduced in December 2024, which has altered green belt planning to grey belt planning as part of a strategy to increase housing supply, but also incorporates other planning aspects. An example, as councillor Siri said, the large battery energy storage units, there would need to be careful consideration as to where these were installed, as there is the potential for fires at these units. Who actually decides which is green belt and which is grey belt? I know there is planning criteria, but the guidelines can all too easily be skewed or altered in favour of grey, not green. For example, in outer north-east Leeds, the Leeds Local Plan shows large parts of green belt for proposed house building. Under the definition of green belt, some of these areas could now be designated grey areas. As I have said before, all looks good on paper, but some grey belt would be totally unsuitable for development. Would the infrastructure cope with the increased traffic congestion, which already is struggling under strain from high traffic levels? Despite local consultations, just like the parking charges, we could end up with more housing in certain areas, even though there was strong local feeling against it. Regarding the brownfield sites, would these now be abandoned as too difficult to develop? Grey belt sites, the easy way out. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Ron Tree.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I welcome this report as a member of the South and West Plans Panel. Colleagues, I'm sure every member of council wants new residential development in our city to be of the highest quality, set the highest standards in construction and energy efficiency, to incorporate affordable housing and to be sufficiently supported by necessary public services and transportation infrastructure. And I'm also sure that we want to see brownfield land used to the greatest possible extent for new residential development. Well, you can't but notice all the building work that's been going along, going on along the A65, which runs through my ward. By the way, could I just remind everyone of the important contribution that Kirkstall makes to our city by hosting this major transport corridor? It's important to us in Kirkstall and to many other people who travel between the city centre and north-west Leeds and beyond. I'm glad it doesn't run through the middle of the Abbey Church, as the road used to do. But to return to residential development, Kirkstall's already doing its bit. Work continues on the site of the former Kirkstall District Centre. People have moved into the new homes that have been completed there. When finished, this development will comprise over 200 homes, with 40 managed by a housing association and let for affordable rents. Further along the A65, towards town, is the Dycoats Development on the old Yorkshire Chemicals site. Planning permission was granted for this a couple of years back. The building work in progress here is a great example of the kind of development that we want to see on brownfield sites in Leeds. This mixed-use development will initially provide 400 homes, over half of them classed as affordable, and 100 of these will be let at the level defined as social rent. Ultimately, the wider scheme will deliver 1,400 new homes with high-quality improvements to the public realm, including a new north-south connection across the river. This site had been lying dormant for around 20 years, but support from the council, West Yorkshire Combined Authority and Homes England's Brownfield Housing Fund has enabled the scheme to go ahead. Another project supported in a similar way is the Points Cross Development, currently under construction on the South Bank. That's 900 new homes, the first phase being 300 energy-efficient affordable dwellings, including some to be offered on a shared ownership model. Another significant regeneration scheme made possible by Leeds City Council, working with WAICA and the government's Brownfield Housing Fund. It will work as we make progress towards tackling the housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Caroline Anderson. Oh, sorry, I keep doing this, I keep ticking. councillor Parham, apologies, I keep jumping people.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for your reminder, it's kindness day tomorrow, so I wanted to say a few words of kindness first. Our South and West Plans Panel is chaired very ably by councillor Ray. I also really welcome the cross-party collegiate nature of the panel from across, from across the house here, the chamber rather. But I just want to say one thing about kindness. I'm struggling to extend that kindness to the scaremongering from certain sections about eating up the green belt. Residents should know that this council, our Labour-led council, we've won awards for being how green we are, as one of the leading green cities in Europe, and we've made exceptional use of our brownfield sites, and that will long continue. So I really, you know, I feel disappointed for this group scaremongering, but there we go. I want to talk briefly today about the Plans Panel annual report, and particularly the focus the report gives to the delivery of much-needed affordable and social housing. The council has played a huge role in working to tackle the housing crisis, but ensuring communities all across the city have access to new affordable and social housing remains a massive challenge, not least in my ward of Armley. But the good news is, we've got several schemes on the go. Construction is due to fully complete soon on a new scheme off Moorfield Road, again on brownfield land at the former Tower Works factory. Some homes are already finished and ready for the first local residents to move in. The scheme is delivered by Yorkshire Housing with support from the council and the government through Homes England. This scheme will provide 27 houses and 23 apartments, all of which will be made available for affordable and social rent. And all will go to people on the council's housing register. Schemes like this have a transformative effect on people's lives, so it's positive to see people already starting to move in. And it's very welcome that many of the homes will be available for social rent. As highlighted in the Plans Panel annual report, it's vital we do all we can to increase the delivery of new affordable and social housing. Around 2,900 houses and properties have already been delivered in Leeds over the last five years by this Labour-led council, more than in any other large city outside London. Something as a council we should all recognise as positive work to help tackle the housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Caroline Anderson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Residents expect their local planning authority to act in their best interests. Moving the goalposts and calling something by a different colour is not acting in their best interests. At least people understand when they see green belt, it's green. Green field, whilst not having the protection of green belt, is green. If you say to somebody, oh, that's grey belt, it's not grey. What does it actually mean? Nobody will understand it. Don't change descriptors just to suit yourselves. Members opposite, I can see you during this whole debate, you're just burying your heads in the sand. You think that we're all talking nonsense, and we're not. This is going to happen to people, and you're going to have to face the consequences when your residents start to wake up to what's happening. Joining up villages into amorphous suburbs makes no sense. Community, identity and place are all lost. Imagine, in my ward, fields between Addal and Bramhope, Cookridge and Bramhope, Bramhope and Poole, Poole and Arthington, all joined together into one enormous suburb of Leeds. Why do residents who do the right thing by volunteering to sit on neighbourhood planning groups, parish councils and community groups, be rode roughshod over? Years of effort obliterated by this government's planning reforms. If the government don't get you, the Labour Council will. Their current local plan sites being consulted on are not the right sites where this involves the Green Belt. I'm not against building houses, people need houses. But they- but they must be, they must be in the right places. People need houses, but they need to come with the right infrastructure and at affordable prices. Doing things faster without proper accountability and scrutiny is wrong. I turn to planning enforcement, my current favourite oxymoron, alongside neighbourhood policing and Trans-Pennine Express. It's so hard to get any enforcement done. But it's at the planning stage that the problems begin. No proper conditions put in that can be enforced. This must change. It would also save money, because enforcement could then take place if the conditions were there. But more importantly, householders and developers would know what they can't get away with, stretching the parameters of acceptability during or after completion. Everybody here knows what tricks are tried. Leeds signed up to a climate emergency declaration. How does building over fields, taking away agricultural space, taking away the, how to get food from the nearest possible place to the dinner plate, and not flying it halfway around the world? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Jenkins.
Lord Mayor, the Plans Panel annual report clearly sets out the complex challenges faced by Plans Panels throughout the year. These include preservation of heritage assets, promoting climate resilience and dealing with contentious sites that can often cause concern locally. The report indicates and includes how an essential part of the process is to ensure all concerns are fully considered and that there are clear processes in place for public participation. We look forward to the Pride in Place funding that's coming to Seacraft in the next 10 years. One of the concerns we have learned, heard a lot about is the housing crisis and how many homes remain unaffordable to lots of our residents. In response to that, this council has made significant progress in the delivery of new affordable and social housing. As we already heard, 2,900 new affordable and social homes delivered in the city over the last five years, more than any other core city. Over 400 of these have been built through the council housing growth programme in that period, with a further 749 acquired from private owners and developers to use as council housing. One particular new-build scheme by the council recently completed in my ward is at Brooklands Avenue. This saw a mixture of new one-bed apartments and two- and three-bedroom family houses built on a former brownfield site, 33 in total, that are all made available for affordable rent to people on the council's housing register. The apartments are all located in a building named Doris Dory House, named in honour of the late East Leeds swimmer Doris Dory, who was just 19 when she won two gold medals in 1938 at the Empire Games in Sydney. And she also appeared at the 1936 Olympics in Berlin. Most of the cost for the Brooklands Avenue scheme was met by the council with additional support from the Combined Authority's Brownfield Housing Fund. So it's all a good example of what investing in new housing can do to ensure we deliver the homes local people need. Thank you.
Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. One section of the Plans Panel's annual report that stands out to me is the part that talks about how new housing not only contributes to meeting local housing needs, but also showcases the city's ambition for sustainable inclusive growth. Housing development is a key driver of the construction industry. It creates significant employment opportunities for builders, contractors, electricians and plumbers. There is a knock-on impact on the supply chain, generating demand for materials, services which further boost the local economy. So we should all welcome this council has delivered the highest level of house building in the city since 1970 in the last two years. And we should also welcome that there are more benefits to come. If we look at the proposed new town in the South Bank, as it forecasts to create 30,000, 35,000 new jobs. The Plan Panel's also, annual report also sets out how promoting climate resilience is one of the key issues addressed by the Plans Panel over the last year. It's good to see that all the new council houses built in Leeds in recent years have been built to high energy and efficiency standards. This includes low-carbon heating, which helps reduce fuel bills for residents and contributes to our net-zero ambitions. This helps create more jobs in clean energy roles such as plumbers, electricians and welders. This will help provide a workforce as we mill forward to more house building. We particularly welcome the government's recent announcement that it will create 20,000 new clean energy jobs in Yorkshire, supported by five new technical excellence colleges to train young people. New houses and inclusive growth creating jobs go hand in hand with the welcome. I would also like to pass comment and pass my good regards to my good friend councillor Ray for his excellent chairing of the South West Plans Panel. And I would also add to him, just so he knows, this is a comment, not a question. Thank you.
Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm not sure it was in the spirit of kindness that the order paper today does look rather like the councillor Prior share, with everything we've got going on. And given the national leadership election campaign that's now underway, councillor Lewis might want to look over his shoulder in the few months ahead. I'm sure in a moment, with the slickness of West Street and councillor Prior will stand up, and I'm certain will say that the 90% figure councillor Lam referred to is incorrect. Because that's what, that's what they do, that's what they do, that's what they do. They fail to accept the information given to them by, A, their own officers, B, by council that they instruct to advise them on planning appeals. Because it is the very officers of this council whose professional judgment we must all take note of. They are the planning professionals in many cases and not us. So when they and the agencies they use to advise them on this, tell us something as elected members, we should take notice of it. And especially so when council tells us what the position is, as they did and as our officers did at the recent planning application in the Kipax and Methley Ward for the battery energy storage site. Councillor Parham, a minute or two ago, you seem to attempt to scupper the comments that were made. And I'll just politely say, I didn't exactly look down the membership list, but one assumes you were on the statutory planning training that we all had to take part in last week, where senior kings council advised us on this very issue that your government has created over green belt and grey belt. So we all sat through that statutory training to take notes so we can sit on Plans Panels. And then we get to full council and members stand up and say, "It's complete rubbish." We have to take notice of the legal and professional advice we're given here. And I just want to comment briefly on, councillor Firth, Robinson and I represent the part of the city that has the most green belt. And the removal of the green belt protection between villages is of real concern. But what also really concerns people is that when we agree to development, and EC's extension has been mentioned numerous times, and we agree that we should have, for example, the provision of two new primary schools in East Leeds Extension, it's that people start to understand the shape of development and start to understand how that will approach. And they then become extremely angry in the case of East Leeds Extension, where a new government is elected and halt all plans to deliver the schools on the East Leeds Extension, remove, pausing, they're pausing the plans to deliver the new school, primary schools on the East Leeds Extension, and that results in extra pressure put on primary schools in our wards such as Scholes, who are already full and are predominantly full by children who actually live in the East Leeds Extension area. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Ray.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I welcome the Plans Panel annual report and particularly the introduction, which rightly highlights the government's push for councils to deliver the housing our communities need. In Leeds, we've taken that challenge seriously. A key part of our response has been the delivery of new council housing, something that this council has prioritised and delivered. The report also acknowledges the challenges Plans Panels face in supporting affordable housing. Despite these, Leeds has made real progress. Through our council house growth, housing growth programme, we've delivered nearly 900 new council homes over five years, 400 built and 479 acquired. We expect to reach 500 acquisitions by year-end. This is alongside thousands of affordable homes delivered with housing associations, supported by Homes England and West Yorkshire Combined Authority and planning agreements. In total, around 2,900 new affordable homes have been delivered, more than any other large city outside London. In Bramley and Stanley Ward, we've seen this commitment firsthand. Cadogan Green and Mount Cross in 2017 and Broad Leeds in 2018 were among the first in the city's new wave of council housing. More recently, just over the ward boundary in Swinna, the top development is underway. Due to complete in 2026, it will provide 82 new homes, all for affordable rent with air-source heat pumps to cut emissions and tackle fuel poverty. It's a brownfield site funded through right-to-buy receipts, borrowing and the West Yorkshire Mayor's Brownfield Housing Fund. In Armley, the Middle Cross Extra Care Scheme is under construction. 65 new homes for older people with care needs due in 2027. All these homes are allocated through the council's housing register, ensuring that they go to those who need them most. Let's never forget that a decent, safe, warm home is the foundation of a good life. It's where children grow, where families find stability and where older people feel secure. Without it, everything else, health, education and opportunity becomes harder to reach. When we build homes, we're not just laying bricks, we're laying the foundation for hope, for health and for a fairer future. Let's keep building homes that our communities can be proud of.
Councillor Neil Buckley.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wanted to say something about the, about the grey belt and as it might affect All Woodley in particular. Now councillor Stevenson just mentioned a few minutes ago when he referred to councillor Parham's remarks. And councillor Parham is a nice chap, I like him. But I fear, but I fear he's being naive in this matter. Because it's all very well saying, "Oh, we never actually build on them." Well, once they're designated as grey belt, it could happen. And once they're built on, we'll never get them back. Now, members might remember that about five years ago, a park and ride facility was to be built in All Woodley, almost opposite the grammar school at All Woodley Gates. Now, it was in the green belt, so it was quite controversial. And it was to be an all-singing, all-dancing, green-planting park and ride with all modern accoutrements. And the plans looked fantastic, they really did. Some people wanted it and some people didn't. It was linked to a bus lane on King Lane in Mowtown and the proposed improvements to the Stonegate Road roundabout. The whole scheme was cancelled in the end because they hadn't enough money. But not before they'd shoehorned other schemes into the budget and which pushed our scheme out. Now, the park and ride was controversial and people were split on it. But the planning application has only just been abandoned. Given that these plans were in place for several years, is there a possibility that this land, which is in the green belt, could be re-designated as grey belt? Well, there obviously is. It seems to me it's a racing certainty. So there you'd have development through the back door. And as councillor Lam rightly said, you're taking, potentially it was going to be a park and ride, so you're taking lots of cars off the road network into a park and ride bus scheme. And now, potentially, it's in the grey belt, can be built on, so you've got hundreds of cars in the green belt and that's it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Prior to sum up.
Oh, aye. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will start by saying councillor Stevenson is right that the 90% figure quoted by councillor Lam is factually inaccurate. And actually, what the danger is here is councillor Lam is not breaking confidences, he's announcing he's breaking confidences while saying things which are not accurate. And the reason it's not accurate is because the technical work is yet to be completed. A percentage doesn't exist. Councillor Lam's looking into the future and guessing. And on top of that, the local plan is subject to further consultation in the new year, so we are not at that stage. In fact, the green belt assessment is at a very early stage. No sites have been identified. This is speculation and conjecture presented as conspiracy. And let's all remember what the green belt is. It's not an environmental policy, it's a spatial one. And a strong series of policies will still apply, because grey belt is not determinative. And the opposition councillors know this, they know that sustainability policies will still apply. They know that accessibility policies will still apply. And they know that landscape policies will also still apply. Now councillor Stables raises the point about Harrogate and North Yorkshire building right up to the boundary, and that is a genuine fear. It is North Yorkshire trying to get around their issues around house building by pushing it up against Leeds, and that is certainly something we do need to look at. But the truth is that if we approve a plan with adequate land supply, then nothing will be granted in the grey belt. And opposition councillors know this. And if opposition oppose that plan...
Well, like there's been chuntering over there, as there has been. Colleagues, I'm being very careful around the chuntering. It's just at the chunter level. Don't worry, councillor Prior, I will be adding this time on to your time. I am monitoring the chuntering very carefully.
And if opposition oppose this plan, they know that it is they who put the green belt at risk, and they know that as well. And councillor Parham was absolutely right that this inaccurate scaremongering shows nothing other than the local elections are increasingly on members' minds. And I would like to issue a correction for councillor Firth. I wouldn't usually be this pedantic, I probably would actually. It wasn't under 1951, it was actually under the 1947 Town and Country Planning Act that this first came in. And I'm delighted to see the Tories finally...
Sorry, just a moment, Casper. Would colleagues to my left let councillor Prior speak, please? To my left!
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll continue my correction of councillor Firth. It was under 1947 Town and Country Planning Act under the greatest Labour Prime Minister Clement Attlee, and I'm delighted to see him finally recognised on the Tory benches. I mean, I admit, it did come in in London earlier in 1938, but London gets everything first, don't they? And this diverse range of applications the panel has seen over this last year not only demonstrates the high pressure to deliver housing and infrastructure quickly, but also to drive and provide the innovative housing that supports our ambition for inclusive growth. And supporting that inclusive growth is a core ambition for this council. And ensuring that development champion this by providing affordable housing is crucial.
Ten seconds, councillor Prior.
And reuse of brownfield land is our priority, hence the urban new towns. And I am proud that Leeds is leading the way with housing growth, with 17,000 new homes, which other parties oppose. And I am proud we have built the highest number of affordable homes out of any core city which other parties oppose, showing that only under Labour are we going to tackle the housing crisis. Thank you.
So we'll call for the vote on the report. Those for, those against, any abstentions? That is carried. Thank you very much indeed. Agenda item seven, page 21, Report on Leaders' Executive Arrangements. Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm going to not just move into terms of notice, but I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank councillor Venna and councillor Lennox for their service on executive board over the years, and wish them well in the future. Sorry, didn't have a question for councillor... Sorry councillor Venna, didn't have a question today to answer, but thank you for everything that you've done for this council and the city over the years. It's certainly something, certainly something that will be remembered for a long time. And also to welcome councillor Flint and councillor Khan to executive board as well. And also to welcome councillor Flint and councillor Khan to executive board as well. And with that, I move the report, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Farley.
Delighted to second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Calling for the vote on the report. Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. That is carried. Agenda item eight, councillor Farley.
Move in terms of the digest, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Timmins.
And I second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed. Call for the vote on the appointments set out in the report. Those for? Those against? Any abstentions? That two is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, colleagues, it's time for the scheduled break. So if we could all be back here by half past four—yeah? I've got a look there, yeah? Yes? Half past—whips just nodded, so we're good. Half past four, perfect. Thank you very much.
Do take your seat colleagues. So, we are about to move to the White Papers, page 21. Before we do move to the White Papers, it has of course been pointed out that councillor Bethel has gone through great efforts today to ensure she was appropriately dressed in the Leeds men cap colours. Would you join me in please, our thanks by way of round of applause for councillor Bethel being approached. What was that, sorry? I can't hear you, sorry. Pink shirts. Where's my, oh where's my pink shirt? You know, your valid point, I will seek to rectify it for the next meeting. But without further ado, yes, the city solicitor, I put it to the city solicitor to deal with. Anyway, moving on from matters sartorial. Agenda item nine, White Paper, councillor Buckley.
Thank you Lord Mayor. And following your announcement that it's World Kindness Day tomorrow. That absolves me of being kind to anybody, especially that lot over there. What a mess the government is in at the moment. Is Keir Starmer still the Prime Minister? I don't know. What a complete mess. And it's now, it's now official of course, it's now official Rachel Reeves is the worst Chancellor since Dennis Healy. I should know because I was working when Dennis Healy was Chancellor.
Let's look at some of the brainwaves. Just for one moment if I may, the leader made a very good point before and was quite insistent that I ask the Conservative group to come to order, which I did. I'm sure he would want his own group to do the same. Either that or one all, it's whichever way you want to take it. Councillor Buckley, thank you.
Thank you Lord Mayor. Let's look at some of the so-called brainwaves from Ms Reeves. The proposed or suggested tax rises. An income tax rise, which she promised she would not do. A levy on vans, that old chestnut which never works. Gambling tax, so all the companies move to Gibraltar. VAT on taxi fares. That would be an appalling own goal for local businesses and the little old lady doing her shopping at Asda. VAT threshold reduction, unbelievable when we're trying to encourage small businesses. Thresholds on incomes further freeze, a property tax, inheritance tax, a dividend tax. Goodness me, it goes on forever. What has she previously said? We must all do our bit. Yes, we must all do our bit. This presumably excludes Angela Rayner and Rachel Reeves herself, who only made inadvertent mistakes. Now, unemployment is up again, a thousand a week. Then locally, we have the West Yorkshire mayor. She wants to impose the workplace parking levy of £2,000 per space, which we've rehearsed in this chamber before, which would cause a mass exodus of small businesses from the city centre and the hollowing out of business. And not content with that, a mayoral precept to pay for a tram line and the £100 million plan to improve the buses, when patronage went down by 13% last year alone, with no explanation, they don't know why. A double-ended tax bombshell, which we should not accept. What a clown show. Compare her inept, inept performance to say the great Nigel Lawson, a superb Chancellor of the Exchequer, and I should know because I was working then as well. Foreign businessmen are no longer investing in Britain. Business startups in Leeds are down by 4%. All these measures are anti-growth. Even Tony Blair has said that the Workers' Rights Bill is anti-growth. And what about the daddy of them all? The cancellation of the new hospital just a few yards from this building, despite the need for this. This is a terrible situation, Lord Mayor, and needs to be dealt with immediately. Thank you.
Councillor Carter.
I second my Lord Mayor and reserve the right to speak, which I will be exercising of course.
Councillor Smith.
Thank you Lord Mayor. We meet here today under the cloud of yet more taxation. Labour taxes, both national and local, being piled onto already stretched households and small businesses across our city. While the Chancellor prepares another round of tax hikes to paper over the cracks in a failing growth plan, this Labour-led administration is offering more of the same. More taxes, more burden and fewer results. We've already seen costs rise through council tax, increased business rates, parking charges at our parks and local shopping centres and other local levies. Our hospitality industry is already on its knees due to recent tax changes and now we're hearing murmurs of a tourist tax. An idea that is as counterproductive as it is poorly timed. Let's be clear, Leeds doesn't need a tourist deterrent, it needs visitor revival. Introducing a tourist tax would deter visitors, especially families and budget travellers. Punish local businesses, fewer tourists mean fewer customers for our shops, cafes and attractions. It would make Leeds less competitive, where cities without this tax would look much more appealing. And let's not forget, tourists already pay through VAT, accommodation costs, meals, travel and event tickets. The irony here is almost comical. This council spends taxpayer money on festivals, years of culture and tourism campaigns, yet considers taxing the very visitors they invite into our city. It's the very political equivalent of pouring water into a leaking bucket and blaming the rain. And what would we gain? A small, uncertain revenue stream at the cost of our city's reputation. Instead of targeting people coming here to spend money, we should be focusing on removing the barriers, not building them. I want to bring your attention to what's working. Local solutions that strengthen the economy without taxing it. In Pudsey for example, we launched the Pudsey Lottery, a grassroots initiative that rewards residents for shopping local. Every pound spent stays circulating within the community. It's a true circular economy. Supporting local traders, encouraging footfall on our high street and fostering civic pride without adding to the tax burden. That's the kind of thinking we need more of. Bottom up, not top down. Empower communities, don't penalise them. An initiative that boasts the local economy while costing the taxpayer nothing. We don't need another tax, we need innovative ways to support the people and the businesses already doing the heavy lifting. Residents and businesses from Pudsey, Bramley, Otley, Headingly, right across our great city are already telling us they feel squeezed, not just by the national government but by this council too. So I'll end with this. Enough is enough. We can tax our way, we cannot tax our way to prosperity. We must grow it, enable it and protect those already paying more and getting less. I support the motion to write to the mayor opposing further tax rises and I particularly urge this council to reject the flawed notion of any potential for a tourist tax outright. Thank you.
Councillor Taylor.
Second Lord Mayor and reserve the right to speak.
Councillor Dixon.
Thank you Lord Mayor. The amendment I put before you today is not just technical changes, they represent a significant improvement in both the fairness and the sustainability of our approach to economic recovery. First, by replacing the original wording with a clear acknowledgement of the economic pressures facing residents and businesses, we show that the council understands the reality on the ground. People are struggling with rising costs and businesses are under strain. Simply increasing taxes whether nationally or locally risks deepening the hardship. This amendment makes it clear that we share those concerns. However, it doesn't stop there. It sets out a constructive alternative instead of short-term fixes, it calls for a long-term fiscal strategy that prioritises investment in public services, infrastructure and skills. That's how we stimulate productivity and inclusive growth, not by squeezing working families, but by building an economy that works for everyone. Crucially, this amendment introduces a fairer tax principle, a turnover-based tax on large multinational corporations. These companies often generate huge revenues in the UK but pay minimal tax because of profit shifting. This proposal ensures they contribute their fair share, reducing the burden on ordinary households. The second part of my amendment strengthens local accountability. It asks the mayor of West Yorkshire to publish a full cost benefit analysis of major transport proposals and to consult the public before introducing any new precept. That's transparency in action, making sure decisions that affect people's pockets are open to scrutiny and debate. Finally, the amendment reaffirms the council's commitment to economic justice and democratic accountability. It advocates for policies that reduce inequality, improve access to education and employment and create opportunity across all our communities. It also promotes a tax system that rewards productive enterprise while ensuring fairness. In short, these amendments transform the motion from a statement of concern into a roadmap for action, one that combines fairness, transparency and long-term investment. Economic recovery must not be built on short-term tax hikes that hit working families the hardest. It must be built on principles that deliver growth and justice for all. So I urge members to support my amendment today and send a clear message, we do better than austerity and regressive taxation, we can build fairer, stronger economy altogether. Thank you.
Councillor Chesterfield.
Thank you Lord Mayor, I'm happy to second this amendment by councillor Dixon. Thank you.
Councillor Chapman.
Thank you Lord Mayor. We have an aspiration, we have an aspiration of being a city where the car isn't needed as well as our net zero ambition and we still have a long way to go. Buses are the key to delivering on our ambitions and yet, since the mayor took over the public transport service, services have reduced by over 30%, despite receiving millions of pounds from the government to support the network. There has also been an 8% reduction in bus usage since the change to the mayor's fairs. People want buses that are quick, reliable, affordable, ideally frequent and importantly buses that take them to where they want and need to go. They don't want to go to a bus station, they do want to go to work, to shops, to the theatre, to hospital appointments etc. More locally, people want buses that connect them with local communities, family and friends and the wider public transport system. We need bus routes and bus services that deliver for people and not for bus companies and that's not happening. For example, I've got residents that have stopped going to services at St Anne's Cathedral because Rotherham buses no longer go beyond the bus station into the city centre. Other residents are spending hundreds of pounds on taxes to get to hospital treatments because they can't rely on buses to get them there and back again. Buses from Rothwell no longer go along the redesigned Crown Point Road because the Reva says the road isn't safe for their passengers. Instead, they use the Hunstlake Navigation Road. Not only does this mean people can't get to Crown Point Retail Park or our new air park, it means students have a long walk in what can be cold, wet, dark conditions as well as having to cross a very busy road just to get to college or home. This Crown Point Road change also adds to congestion, so much so that we've had to have yet another consultation about what to do with it. The combined authority and this council need to work together so that highways decisions work for public transport, for public transport to deliver what people want and that's where we need Mayor Brabham to deliver and to deliver quickly. Mass transit is years away and that's only if we can get the funding for it resolved. Famously Leeds is the largest city in Europe without a mass transit system and the government needs to get to grips with that and find the money to fund it fully. Mayor Brabham and this administration should be pursuing that and not looking for ways to pass the cost on to residents and businesses through local taxes and precepts or by reducing funding to other services. We're already hearing that a large proportion of the transport for city regions budget is to be used to fund the mass transit system, apparently at the expense of, for example, day-to-day highways work and we all know how unpopular the potholes are in this city as well as Vision Zero. Mayor Brabham has a huge challenge on her hands to deliver a fit-for-purpose bus service before we get to a much-needed mass transit system and both need to be delivered quickly, on time and on budget. I hope she's up to the challenge. Thank you Lord Mayor.
Councillor Campbell.
Could I second reserve my right to speak, Lord Mayor?
Thank you. Councillor Stables.
Lord Mayor, this country's finances have been in a mess for a long time. The Tories' 14 years in government did not shore up our economy, fix the NHS, fix our transport or tackle our adult social care crisis. But in the summer of 2024, we got a new Labour government that would sort out our public services because they are the party for working people and they would do that without raising any of the country's main tax levers. Almost everyone knew this couldn't work, except apparently the government itself. So it's no surprise to anyone that the Chancellor is coming cap in hand back to people this year to raise taxes. But the speculation is that instead of taxing the richest in our society, they plan to raise income tax for all. This isn't the solution. Inequality is growing in this country, the riches in society are getting richer whilst the vast majority are feeling no benefit from our economic prosperity, being the sixth biggest economy in the world. In fact, the number of billionaires in the UK has grown from 29 to 171 since 2010. The super rich are getting ever richer on the back of the ordinary working people in this country. It's not surprising they're fed up with the status quo and we see this on our streets with unrest and the rise of the far right as ordinary working people look out for a way, look out for a way out of drudgery in their everyday life. way out of drudgery in their everyday lives. But it doesn't have to be like this. The government can choose a different path. The wealthiest in this country can afford to pay a little more to enable our public services to be improved, and at the same time, the biggest polluters in this country, who are driving up our carbon emissions and causing air pollution, should be paying a carbon tax to both compensate for the harm on society and to encourage them to embrace green technologies as quickly as possible. Which is why we propose that a wealth tax is created that would impose a 1% tax on those that have £10 million and 2% on billionaires, alongside capital gains tax reform to align the rate paid on income and taxable gains, which would only affect about 2% of taxpayers, plus the alignment of the tax rate on investments with the tax and national insurance contributions on income, removing the upper earnings limit that restricts the amount of national insurance paid by higher earners, and a carbon tax on companies that continue to harm our environment. These measures would deliver between £130 and £150 billion by the end of Parliament, which could be used to rebuild our NHS, ensuring that future generations have a free-at-the-point-of-delivery health service for all, including dental care, make our care system fit for purpose and support local authorities to deliver local services, which would help so many people across Leeds struggling day-to-day just to live. I urge you to vote for this amendment and send a clear message to Rachel Reeves to think again.
councillor Ali.
Second and reserve my right, please.
Thank you. councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And it's really welcome this opportunity, just first of all, to talk about some of the great work we've been doing in Leeds to lift people out of poverty, and I think that's something that we should be proud of as a council. And the most recent indices of multiple deprivation data recognise that we've gone in 10 years from having 16 neighbourhoods in the worst 1% in the country down to seven. And I think that's down to the work we have done around targeting priority neighbourhoods, around investing in those areas, around having services like our Ofsted-rated outstanding employment and skills services, supporting people into work and into better jobs. And the work we have done as an organisation ourselves, and we're the biggest employers in Leeds, to get people on the real living wage. We have made a difference in tackling poverty in this city. And when we talk about the economy, when we talk about that, we are making a difference in Leeds, and that has to be recognised. I can understand why some of the other parties with our great record want to talk around national things in this council chamber, because it's all they have left to do. But I'm proud of our record as a councillor in Leeds and delivering that. And I just want to turn to a couple of things that have been said already. I mean, I can help councillor Buckley out with why bus passenger numbers have gone down. It is because, living as a do-well, the only bus company is Arreving, is the appalling state of the privatised bus companies, privatised by Thatcher, let to do what they want, no regulation, no oversight, given loads of public money with no accountability. But I'm absolutely, again, proud that we are doing something about it. And let's not forget that shambolic service that we have seen is what the Conservatives wanted to continue. They wanted to let their friends in the private sector continue running our bus services down, and that is just a clear example of where we are making a difference. We are making a difference as well to individual people's income. We've got a household support form, we've given grants out. And I also look again in terms of the cost of living crisis. No garden waste collections in Leeds are free. And I look over the border into North Yorkshire, we've heard a lot about the North Yorkshire border today, where a Conservative-led council charges £70 or £80 for garden waste collection. We are committed to supporting people through the cost of living crisis. And of course, the Tracy Brabham Fan Club over here have not yet recognised, so I will, the impact of the mayor's fairs, reducing bus fares in this city. So a bus fare in the outer area, our part of the world, has gone from £3.20 down to £2, gone up a little bit since then, but this is a real difference. This is a real difference we have made in our area. And I know the Conservatives want to try and talk us down, but let's talk about some of the great things we do in Leeds. And I can hear them chuntering away over there. So I'm going to use my last few minutes just to talk about their record. Who remembers Black Wednesday? If I'm going back to the Thatcher government, who remembers Black Wednesday when interest rates tripled overnight? Who remembers the 22 Tory tax riders under John Major in the lead-up to the 1997 government? Who remembers George Osborne coming in? Who remembers George Osborne coming in and raising VAT up to 20%? In fact, who remembers George Osborne overall in that shambles of a government?
Thank you, councillor Lewis. Thank you, councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I could politely remind colleagues that the 'thank you councillor' and insert name is your signal to sit down, please. Thank you. Okay. councillor Finnegan.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've been sitting here for many, many years through a Labour government, through a Tory coalition government with Lib Dems, through a Tory government and back to a Labour government as well. We're fundamentally in a situation where, like fantasy football, we're playing fantasy politics. Primarily, you have 4 million people who are on universal credit or its likeabouts who have no obligations to seek work, so you have a long-term commitment to them. Well, you know, those under 40, a lot of those with minor mental health issues. There is a proposal to do away with the two-child cap, which is again, £2-3 billion. It's fairly clear that the triple lock is unaffordable. People don't want to discuss and debate it, but it's unrealistic and unsustainable in the long run. We all want more money put into adult social care. We also need to put more money into defence because of the international threats that we presently face. Now, if that's the case, you cannot pay United States rates of tax and hope for Scandinavian public services because it's not going to work that way. And you have to have that honest discussion with taxpayers about if they want more investment into all of these areas and they're going to have to pay for it. Now, it is a fact that the richest 5% in the country pay 29% of income tax, and it is a fantasy to believe that should you start to impose wealth taxes on that 5%, that they're going to just hang around and quite happily and gleefully pay that extra taxation. They will go abroad to Dubai or wherever else where they don't have such a tax rate. The net result being that those of us who are left, who haven't got the opportunity to go to Dubai or wherever else in the world that we could go to, are fundamentally the ones who are going to have to shoulder this burden. So we need to start having an honest discussion about levels of taxation. Historically, our levels of taxation are significantly lower than a lot of European countries, and you fundamentally have to have that debate about, do you want the state to do more, in which case you're going to have to pay more? Or do you believe that the state should be doing less and it's down to individuals? But until we have that honest discussion about taxation and taxation rates, all this talk about wealth taxes and hitting the wealthy and all the rest of it is fundamentally fantasy politics. It's not realistic, it's not achievable. We have to have that honest discussion with the wider community in Britain about what they are prepared to pay in terms of taxation levels. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Cooper.
Yeah, Lord Mayor. I've got to say, listening to the opposition speeches, some of the opposition speeches today, I have to wonder how they make their weight at Civic Hall, given the memories appear so bad, how they have the nerve to talk about inflation. Let me remind councillor that under the last Conservative government, inflation reached 11.1%. With inflation on food items hitting 19.1%, what is the latest inflation rate? Shall I tell you? It's 3.8%. With food at 4.5%. Both figures are a good deal lower than what we had to endure under the last Conservatives. They talk about tax increases. How many different ways of increasing tax have we just heard already? Well, can you just wait for the budget? It hasn't been announced yet, nothing's been announced yet, so let's just wait and see, shall we? I'll carry on even though you're chuntering. Let me once again jog your memories as to what we were promised by one Conservative Prime Minister after another and their colleagues. I will ask you what the items on my list have in common. Are you ready? We will not raise the rate of income tax, VAT or national insurance. We will keep the triple lock. No one should have to sell their home to pay for care. We will build Northern Powerhouse Rail between Leeds and Manchester. We're going to build 40 new hospitals across the country. We will keep our existing energy cap and introduce new measures to lower bills. We will host the UK's first-ever international LGBT conference. We will ban conversion therapy. We will build 300,000 new homes per year. We're going to end rough sleeping for good. We're going to cut NHS waiting lists. We're going to stop the boats. We're going to end child poverty, and we're going to level up the UK's regions. Can anyone tell me what they've got in common? Anybody tell me what they've got in common? Well, let me tell you, members of council, what they've got in common. That is a list of manifesto promises broken by the Conservative government, not just under one Prime Minister, but under three. They broke each and every single one, and I don't remember anyone from the Conservative benches over there jumping up and down and pointing fingers, even when their government oversaw what was described as the biggest set of tax increases since the Second World War. And let's face it, colleagues, we've had lettuces outlive their Prime Ministers and Chancellors. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Firth.
Yeah, happy to second councillor Buckley's white paper. Sometimes you wish you could put all 711,000 residents of Leeds in this chamber and listen to the arrant economic rubbish they have heard from the illiterate Green Party. And then listen to councillor Deborah Cooper wanting to go backwards and talk about the past. You're the government! You're the government! You may well laugh here, but you've a lot more money than me and shall have yours on the 26th of November! Members of council, councillor Buckley makes some very, very good national points, but I want to look very quickly at this mayoral authority. Councillor Carle in the last debate rattled on about the new, the franchising of the bus services, on about Supertram, whatever we're going to call it now. Let me just tell you, the estimated cost for franchising bus services in West Yorkshire is substantial, including an initial £85.5 million for depot upgrades, with further fleet investment £252 million, over 15 bus networks under public control, actually franchised, and that's a misnomer in itself, with the total cost being over £100 million. At the same time, this mayoral authority wants to press ahead with any more ambitious trams. Everyone knows I was a major supporter and exponent of Supertram, but I start to wonder whether it's ever going to happen. Remember, John Prescott, God bless his soul, committed in 1991 to supporting Supertram in 2005. 2005, Alistair Darling pulled the plug, NGT, championed by the leader of the council, cost this council millions, useless, went to a public appeal, 2,000 objections. I warned him, don't go there with all those objections, you'll lose. He went, he lost and cost us a fortune. So councillor Lewis, don't lecture anybody in this council chamber about wasting money. This mayoral authority is second-rate, and what worries me is that they can't, in the phraseology of one person, think and chew gum at the same time. Bus franchising and Supertram together spells one thing to me: massive financial disaster, and it will be on you. No excuses, nowhere to run, nowhere to go, except you won't be there to take responsibility because you're on your way out.
councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I have to say, it seems somewhat unclear to me as to what actually this debate is about. I somewhat mistakenly assumed that when I read the original white paper, that we were going to discuss bus transport and the mayorality and how the new franchise service would be funded, but we seem to have drifted somewhat off-topic into national taxation. Can I just say initially, our group support the principle of bus franchising. We have, when councillor Downs was chair of the Transport Authority, it was our policy, and we moved down the road towards that. I have to be honest with you and say, when we lost control of the authority, the Labour Group didn't pursue that, but stuck with the Quality Bus Initiative, which has been a complete disaster, which is probably why the Conservatives still support it. But I think we have to be honest, don't we? And as I think we've already said, we have to be honest that if we want services, we have to pay for them. I was somewhat bemused by councillor Buckley's comments. Now, I appreciate what you said about Rachel Reeves. Let's be honest, she's not having a good week, month, year, really. What I did, what I was slightly surprised about was that you didn't mention the magnificent contribution to the economy that Liz Truss came forward with, and how she benefited the society we live in and the taxation policy we're facing. I also have an issue with the Greens, because I think, actually, you've missed the point about the transport, and you've just gone straight on to national policy for taxation. Councillor Cooper's list, I really enjoyed that. Unfortunately, I thought to myself when it finished, that's the list of promises that the Labour government... Yes, it is. That's what the government proposed at the general election. And finally, councillor Smith and her complete misunderstanding of the whole concept, but the only thing she doesn't support is a tourist tax. Let's be honest, tourist tax work. They supply funding for the infrastructure you need to support the tourist industry. Everywhere they've been introduced, they have been a success. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Ali.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Lewis, one for next year when you set the budget. We can keep the heating costs down in here with the amount of hot air that the Tories blow out. I find it really amusing that the contribution from the Reform Party to the white amendment with the white paper was, and a tourist tax. All it shows us is that they're a reincarnation of the Tory party, and we've got Farage as a pound shop, Enoch Powell. And we can always expect them to put the interests of the billionaires ahead of the ordinary people. At a recent small business conference, Nigel Farage gave thanks to Lord Bamford, owner of JCB, for a £200,000 donation. Not only are Reform taking Tory voters, but they're also taking Tory donors. And I wonder what tricks these politicians are going to have to perform to pay back those donors. Does anyone remember the Covid contracts or Michelle Moan? The same sleazy donations, the same ideals, the same corrupt principles and the same failed politics. Our country has been made to suffer from a Lib Dem facilitated 14-year Tory austerity, which has been continued, unfortunately, by the Labour government, and it's time for something new. We're going to have to raise taxes, we're going to have to be real about that, but those taxes have to be equitable. They have to be borne equitably, and those with the broader shoulders are going to have to take a fairer share. Now, councillor Finnegan mentioned 5% pay 29% of the taxes. Now, that just highlights the inequality in our society. Now, I'm sure someone's going to bring up a scaremongering... Now I'm sure, I'm sure someone's going to bring up a scaremongering, a scaremongering sort of line that if you tax wealth, billionaires are going to flee. They're not just going to pack up their mansions, put them in their Samsonite suitcases and wheel them away. And if they try, we've got an exit tax. We're not a country that you can exploit, hoard away your billions and then run away when you're asked to contribute your fair share. 10 million, that's more than most people can dream of. But we're not talking about earned income, we're talking about a tax on assets. A 1% tax along with a 2%, a 1% tax on those with assets over 10 million and a 2% tax on billionaires could raise as much as 24 billion. Now, an organisation called Patriotic Millionaires are calling for a 2% tax on assets of over 10 million.
Thank you councillor Ali. councillor Firth.
Thank you very much indeed, Lord Mayor. Well, I must say that councillor Ali, I'm really sorry, but the time that you had in between councillor Stables introducing that amendment and then, one, three words, must try harder. Because JCB gave 200 grand to the Tories as well. So, look, in terms of where we are, get your facts straight. JCB is a good British business and you should be proud of it. In terms of where we are, the situation is, is the fact that we have a country where people have raised the fact of inflation. Inflation was at its highest at 11% in 2022 because of the Ukraine war, the spike in terms of the food prices, the oil and gas prices. And you know what? The one organisation and think tank that the Labour Party still trusts, the IFS, well, it was in their report and that's how they explained it. 2% inflation at the last general election, it's now 3.8%. Now, after that circus of that general election where we heard this and we heard that, we still got the clowns in charge, the clowns are back. And not only that, to talk about circus, talk about the elephant in the room. When it comes to 125 million pounds that was put into the Bus Service Improvement Plan, that was given partially, mostly by the previous government. And all of that money, a large amount has been spent on the Mayors' Fairs, that yes, have increased. But interestingly enough, since the introduction of the Mayors' Fairs, what's happened? Patronage has gone down. So how has it had the impact that they're all glorifying at that same time? Now, talking about one particular mention that was coming here within relation to tax rises, and one that came last year in the budget, was in relation to the jobs tax. The hike in national insurance that was said would never happen, and it did. Because even though that didn't happen directly on employees, by putting it on employers, it meant it had a direct impact on the employees, their prospects, their wages and their pay packets. And the nature of when it comes to unemployment, unemployment is now at the same level it was in lockdown. So since the progress that was taken of the previous government, we have had an unemployment rise in this country every single month of this Labour government. And the only new jobs that are being created? Well, it's the Labour councillors leaving the nest or leaving the cabinet and going at jobs elsewhere. Because the nature of where we are is the fact that this Labour Party in this administration stands here and has the gall to say to us, we said this and we said that. Well, I'm sorry councillor Cooper, you read out a list of the very same shopping list that Rachel Reeves promised and is about to reverse in a couple of weeks' time. In 1983, in the general election, they talked about the Labour manifesto, which included written by a number of Leeds MPs, as the longest suicide note in history. Well, the nature of it is that this budget has the longest lead up until it's actually going to get released in two weeks' time. And all of the impact of those measures will have a direct impact on the residents of Leeds. Talk about the highest tax rises in the country since World War II, we had a pandemic, absolutely. And then now what's going to happen councillor Cooper, you're on the finances. It's going up again in two weeks' time. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I will just point out what you guys pointed out earlier on about the noise in the chamber, okay? councillor Buckley, to sum up please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And we've heard some interesting contributions there. And I have to start with the Greens. Because what they said was so far from reality, it was not true. It's more or less, it's chairman Mao meets Les Dawson. It's incredible economics, it doesn't work. And as for a tourist tax, which councillor Smith mentioned, there's a story about Kim Philby when he was marooned in Moscow and Coral Brown went to see him in 1958. And she said to him, what depresses you about having to live in Moscow? And he said, well, it's the damp, the filth, the dreariness. And she said, hmm, have you been to Leeds? No, it's, it's not, it's not 1958. But a tourist tax will not work and you cannot tax your way to prosperity. Now councillor Dixon mentioned the mayoral precept and consult in the public, which is absolutely true. I noticed that lots of Labour members, or some Labour members, were applauding the Greens. So I expect they'll be voting with the Green amendment. We'll see. As for taxing the rich, coming back to what councillor Stables said and councillor Ali, 1% this, 2% that, haven't they read the papers? There are thousands have gone to Dubai already, already. They're only millionaires, not billionaires, because these people are mobile. They can go anywhere they like. So councillor Lewis, bus franchising. Well, Alistair Darling was the last chancellor to cancel the tram scheme. And I have to say, bus franchising with a patronage going down as it is, you're going to be left holding the baby. Spending, spending is too high, it's got to be reduced. Welfare must come down. And councillor Carter, councillor Carter said there will be a disaster. And he mentioned the cost of franchising and so forth. And I don't think politicians and officers at White have got the faintest idea of what they're taking on. So, you know, all this is a mess. We need to get spending down and taxation down. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
So we're going to call for the vote. First of all, in the name, in the amendment, in the name of councillor Smith, those for. Those against. Any abstentions? Thank you, that is lost. So then the vote on the second amendment, in the name of councillor Dixon, those for. Those against. Any abstentions? That is lost. The third amendment, in the name of councillor Chapman. Those for. Those against. Any abstentions? That two is lost. The vote on the fourth amendment, in the name of councillor Stables, those, wait. Those four. Those against. See, they know. Any abstentions? That is lost. So now the vote on the motion. Thank you, just want to give Ed something to do.
Thank you. Will all members please ensure they're in their allocated seats? Members have requested a recorded vote in respect of the motion in the name of councillor Buckley. Members should refer to their desk unit and press the green button marked yes plus to vote in favour, red button marked no minus to vote against, yellow button marked abstain zero to abstain.
Two members haven't voted, I'm assuming they don't wish to. Okay, so votes for, 21. Those abstaining, one. Votes against, none. Total of 88 members altogether, that is lost. So. I said votes against, did I not say 66? I'll do that again, clearly I can't read. Votes for, 21. Votes against, 66. Abstentions, one. Total of 88 votes cast, that's lost. Okay, agenda item 10, white paper in the name of councillor Dixon. Councillor Dixon.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I stand here today to support a proposal that reflects our shared commitment to responsible planning, community wellbeing and democratic engagement. The values are of a fair and balanced society. So the council proposes to consult ward members on extending Article Four of the Town and Country Planning Order 2015 to areas of Leeds that are not currently covered. This is not just a technical adjustment, it's a vital step to restore balance in our housing strategy and protects the integrity of our communities. So HMOs or houses in multiple occupation serve a purpose. They really do serve a purpose, but they offer flexible housing for students, young professionals and those just seeking affordability. But unchecked growth in these leads to overdevelopment, strain on our services and erosion of community cohesion. Leeds already has an Article Four direction in wards like Headingly, Hyde Park, Woodhouse, Armley and Beeston Hill. Due to their current extreme HMO concentrations, we're already harming their local communities. Yet we now see a displacement effect. As restrictions tighten in those wards, landlords shift to neighbouring areas without Article Four in place, creating new hotspots and new pressures. This proposal does not ban HMOs, it restores local control, a principle central to community-led planning. By requiring planning permissions for small HMOs three to six occupants, we empower planning teams and ward members to assess applications on merit, ensure development serves residents and not just the profit margins. So this policy is a legal, fair and, in my opinion, necessary policy. Councils like Merton have done this successfully. Leeds as the president of precedent and the statutory power. More importantly, we have a duty, a duty to protect neighbourhoods from becoming transient zones, a duty to ensure infrastructure like schools and waste services are not overstretched and a duty to listen to our communities, asking for a seeing how their streets evolve. So this proposal reflects my social democratic principles. Localism, giving communities real influence over planning decisions. Housing justice, ensuring development meets social need, not speculative gain. Balanced growth, protecting community cohesion while providing affordable housing. The consultation framework is robust, stakeholder, stakeholder mapping, public engagement and impact assessments. It is collaborative, not imposed. It gives us the tools to shape housing policy that is inclusive and sustainable. So in closing, I just urge this council to support this proposal, not just as a planning measure, but as a statement of principle. Let us stand for our communities that are safe, balanced and empowered. Let us ensure development serves the public good and not just the private gain. Thank you.
councillor Chesterfield.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Fellow councillors, I am pleased to second this important proposal which seeks to extend the Article Four protections to more wards across the city. This is not just a matter of planning, it's a matter of community safety, cohesion and fairness. We've heard how unchecked HMO growth can lead to overdevelopment and strain on local services. But I want to highlight another dimension, the social consequences of high HMO concentration, particularly in areas not currently covered by Article Four. Leads to council's own planning guidance acknowledges the risks in areas where dense HMO development will see an increase of antisocial behaviour, noise complaints and environmental degradation. These are not isolated incidents, these are patterns that emerge when housing becomes transient and unregulated. The council's core strategy policy H6 is clear. High concentrations of HMOs can undermine the health and stability of communities. And the evidence backs this up. Data from the Leeds antisocial behaviour team and West Yorkshire Police has shown that areas with a high HMO density, such as parts of Headingly, Hyde Park and Hales, also experience elevated levels of nuisance behaviour and crime. This is not about stigmatizing tenants though, it's about recognizing that when housing is poorly managed and when landlords are not held to account, the consequences fall on the wider community, on families, on elderly residents and on the local services. The Leeds HMO lobby estimates that there are 10,000 HMOs in the city with a majority concentrated in the North West Leeds. But as Article Four has taken effect in those areas, we are now seeing a spillover into neighbouring wards, places that were once stable, now facing rapid change without the tools to manage it. Extending Article Four is not a ban, it's a safeguard. It allows us to assess each proposal on its merits to ensure that housing is balanced and that communities are not overwhelmed. It also complements other tools like HMO licensing and enforcement, creating a joined up approach to housing and safety. This proposal is about fairness, it's about giving every ward the same level of protection and oversight and it's about listening to residents who are telling us clearly that they want to say in how their neighbourhoods evolve. I urge colleagues to support this consultation and the proposals. Let this proactive step towards a safer, stronger and more sustainable communities across Leeds. Thank you very much.
councillor Anderson.
My Lord Mayor, excuse me, my Lord Mayor, in proposing this amendment, I'm not arguing that the proposal should not be addressed. My colleague councillor Harrington will give you an example of where unexpected issues can occur. Now, just to give a bit of background, I've actually got history on this issue. Back in 2010, the then councillor Martin Hamilton proposed, and I seconded, a white paper motion on an Article Four direction. Both of us were arguing at the time against our own government that we felt it was important to look after the citizens of the city and put them first rather than politics first. And we worked cross-party to get that on. Labour Party, who were in control at the time and a minority, they put some silly amendment in. It got carried at the end of the day because they've got more people, but it just, it basically agreed with what we were saying. So I've got some history on this. And that's why I think we've got this, unfortunately, it's not going to be possible to do what you want to do. Getting back, you know, to the white paper itself, there's a risk if we change this, we could actually throw the baby out of the bathwater. My government, previous government, came up with a direction about a year or so ago, which basically in effect meant if we were to change it, we could lose the whole blessed thing. Every single thing could disappear in terms of the Article Four that we've got just now. That unless, so we run a great risk, if we were to change it, we'd actually lose the whole city. And that would be disastrous for the city. So unfortunately, on this occasion, I do think it's a step too far because otherwise the government legislation could come along and bite us where we don't really want it to bite us. And as a result of that, I personally think there are problems behind it. Now, in terms of what we've got before us here today, I can't understand the Labour amendment. I just don't know what you're getting at. You're telling us all the great work that your government's doing in terms of hammering the private rented sector. But that's nothing to do with what is being put forward by the Social Democrats. They're talking about trying to work, you know, they're looking to try and help get housing put in the right place. What your policies from your government is you're actually anti landlord. Now, I know that your councillor prior is very friendly with some landlords and also the landlords that are in your own group. Are they really telling you that you've got this right? Is this the real way that we should be getting? Is this the real way that we should be working with a partner who we need in the city? If we don't have the private landlords working with us, we'll have an even bigger housing problem than we've got just now. And I'm sure that some of the private landlords that you've got in your group privately know that what the government are bringing forward is going to cause all sorts of mayhem for them, going to affect the viability of their product, and we're going to be back with no houses for people to go into. The private rented sector do give a valuable service to us. Now, we've just had selective licensing brought forward. Again, a lot of landlords are against that. Personally, I think we need to give that fair wind and see what happens. But overall, I do think that private landlords are essential to us, and we've got to work with them. And I am reliably informed through the, the same people, I suppose, I think that councillor Prior knows as well, who have given me information on this, that it does work. The current arrangements do work and are working very efficiently and effectively. So on this occasion, I think we've just, this is a stage too far, we could end up losing more than we gain in terms of what we're going. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Harrington?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm speaking as the second councillor Anderson's motion. To be clear, my colleagues and I in the Conservative group have never been completely against house building in Leeds, of course not. We've always said there needs to be the right housing in the right place, and the same goes for houses in multiple occupation, or HMOs. HMOs can and do provide a valuable service both to tenants and to the wider community. They can be more affordable to tenants, renting just a room rather than a whole property, they may already be furnished, and many have bills included in the rent, giving budget certainty to those tenants. Living in an HMO provides a ready-made community and the chance to meet new people, which is particularly beneficial for students or those new to a city. Where there is a high turnover of potential tenants, HMOs offer a way of accommodating that need. So as I say, my Lord Mayor, an HMO can benefit tenants, landlords and the wider city. But as it stands, there are downsides to having an HMO next door, especially when they're in the wrong location. The issue at stake here is that for the most part, a property owner can set up an HMO and subject to the appropriate checks, registrations and safety features, such as working fire alarms. The only time neighbours become aware is when all and sundry turn up to the property and it's a done deal. Under permitted development, there is no advance warning, there is no opportunity to scrutinize the plans for an HMO, there is no option for immediate neighbours to comment or object, there is no option for neighbours to see what the expert opinion of council officers is. Essentially, residents are left fighting a rear guard action, relying on ineffective planning enforcement actions because even they have one arm tied behind their back due to the regulations. Personally, I am in favour of an Article Four type restriction on HMO licensing. I believe this would give greater scrutiny to future HMOs and their locations across the city. It would enable neighbouring residents to be informed about what is happening on their streets. Most of all, it would enable planning conditions to be put on HMO properties that can then be enforced should the need arise. Councillor Anderson's sensible and balanced amendment calls for a paper to be brought to the executive board to explore the most effective way to manage concerns about future HMOs across the city for the benefit of Leeds residents. As he said, back in two thousand and ten, the Conservative group supported a Liberal Democrat white paper to oppose the removal of planning permission in regard to HMOs. It was the coalition government in power at the time, and my group stood up in opposition to our party in government as we believed they were wrong on this issue, something the current administration seem unable or unwilling to do currently. I urge members on all sides to back councillor Anderson's motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Prior?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We need to be honest, Britain's housing market is broken, and it's been broken for years. We've got families priced out, renters living in uncertainty, paying sky-high rents while being told they couldn't possibly afford a mortgage, and far too many people stuck in homes that simply aren't good enough. And I will help councillor Anderson in his confusion as to our amendment. HMO proliferation is a symptom of that housing market, and that's why I welcome the government's Renters' Rights Bill. Because for too long, Tory government after Tory government has tinkered around the edges, hoping the market would somehow fix it all, and it hasn't, and it won't. So the Renters' Rights Bill is a step in the right direction. It's a sign that finally we are starting to put people before profit in the private rented sector. The bill ends the disgrace of no-fault evictions, where tenants can be turfed out on a win. It introduces a decent home standard, so every renter, wherever they live, can expect a home that's safe, secure and fit to live in. It strengthens council powers to crack down on rogue landlords, and it brings in a new ombudsman to deliver fair, transparent decisions when disputes arise. It's long overdue, but we shouldn't stop there. We need a fair, stable and responsible housing market. We need to empower communities to shape their own future, because what works in Westminster won't always work in Leeds. In my own ward, in Headingly and Hyde Park and some of the surrounding areas, in Woodhouse, Kirkstall, Far Headingly, we know what that imbalance of HMOs has done. I myself live in between two HMOs and opposite another one, and I know the work we've done here locally in Leeds to fix that through Article Four powers, and how that has worked. We use those powers to control conversions, to bring back balance. It's not about stopping HMOs, it's about ensuring communities have that balance to make sure that neighbourhoods can breathe, and it's worked. We've seen family homes returning to the market, a healthier mix of residents and a sense of community on our streets. A notable success, for example, has been the Beckett's Park area of Wheatwood Ward. We've seen a better balancing between HMOs and family homes, and this has significantly shifted the communities in that area. But in many areas, we do have further to go, but these Article Four powers have allowed us to shift that market. And I do welcome councillor Dixon bringing attention to this issue. I would say he can bring issues to me at any point, he doesn't have to wait for a full council white paper, because I would always welcome conversations about this from any area to speak to me both as an exec member but also how it is working in Headingly and Hyde Park Ward. And it's important to note that these powers are only one element of what needs to be done to improve housing in the city, and that's what this Labour amendment is about. So let's applaud national reform, but let's also recognize that real change must start locally. We need to combine strong national legislation like the Renters' Rights Bill with effective local powers like Article Four, and we can get the best of both worlds. We can protect tenants and create fairer, better balanced communities, and we must build a housing market that works for everyone, not just investors, speculators and those trying to maximize profit who see housing only as a commodity. Because at the end of the day, a home is not just about four walls and a roof, it's stability and it's security for our residents, thank you.
Councillor Leveson?
Thank you, I second and reserve my right to speak.
Councillor Finnegan?
Lord Mayor, our position is that we support anything that means there is a closer scrutiny of HMOs and running them through the planning process in whichever way we actually achieve that is something that we would support. Not against HMOs, they need to be in the appropriate location. We do think that they should go through the planning process so that at least local communities can feel that they're involved in the decision-making process. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Campbell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think it's everybody's right to live in a home which is well-maintained, affordable and safe. And I think it's also fair to say that living in an HMO is not a choice that most people have. I appreciate the issue in relation to students. That's a group of friends joining together to take on a house or a flat. In the area I represent, HMOs don't work like that. You end up with a landlord who puts a group of people together who don't know each other, have no indication about what the background of those people are, and you force them to live, through economic reasons quite frankly, in, I believe, substandard accommodation. And I think, I take Wayne's point, I do think that this is something we can do as a council can do something about. And so I would support, and we will support Wayne's proposal, because the council has to, has to, work to ensure that everybody in Leeds has a decent standard of living. I would love to see HMOs disappear altogether. This talk about, oh, it's a useful way for certain people to get into housing. These are substandard houses, let's not mess about. The ones I, the area I represent, they are substandard. Nobody would live under those conditions if they didn't choose to do so. And I go back to students, I think the students do choose to do so. So therefore, any actions that we as a council can take to improve the conditions of people who are pushed into HMOs must be something that we set as a priority. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Carlisle?
Friends, thanks to our colleagues presenting this paper and to all speaking on it. We recognize the role HMOs play in the housing mix, and all for efficiency, but we must recognize the common impact of communities where there's a concentration of HMOs. Housing researchers and writers like Danny Dorling have done really good work on this. At the thin end of the wedge, areas with multiple HMOs suffer from niggly issues like parking congestion. HMOs typically create more transient communities too, not good for community development and resilience. We also more broadly need to reboot our groaning planning system to ensure that community infrastructure like educational and medical provision follows greater concentrations of population, but that's a bigger discussion for another day. And at the thick but all too common end of the wedge, as with concentrations of licensed venues, there is frequently a cumulative impact of low-grade HMOs, with neighbourhoods becoming crime and antisocial behaviour hotspots, with scores of vulnerable but undersupervised people squashed in together, drawn into whirlpools of negativity. Another big discussion for another day is the under-regulated cottage industry of supported housing, where some rogue operators are fleecing the system, yet providing very limited care and support, displacing regular residents and creating mayhem in our communities. However, I would stress an Article Four order is not the golden ticket that resolves all these issues. Many of the communities we represent as Greens, including those in inner south Leeds, are already covered by this regulation, and yet HMOs continue to fly through planning and proliferate. All developers create HMOs, but planning enforcement stress that they can't step up until the building is finished, and judging by cases we've seen, they seem to end up with retrospective permission after all. How is this happening? A local resident was recently saying how she feels many councillors here in this chamber simply have no lived experience of this field, no appreciation for what it's like on the ground in communities like ours. This is borne out by the breezy optimism of the Tory amendments and comments. There is much work to do. At base, HMOs are not a good substitute for the dignity afforded by proper homes, and for that, we clearly need the UK housing system to be fundamentally recalibrated, away from this culture of rampant profiteering. We welcome some of the moves by national government, and we the Greens are pushing for more. And this returns us to our kind and friendly discussion in July about the need for innovation on housing right now in Leeds. We can do much more, we can build a fair, balanced housing system in Leeds and across the UK. Thank you.
Councillor Farley?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As you might expect, I'm going to be speaking in support of councillor Prior's amendment. But what I would say is, I'm quite sympathetic to this white paper. Living in East End Park, we've seen a proliferation of HMOs, and it does cause a lot of challenge for existing communities in terms of the impact that it has on parking, the impacts on families. Now, while no piece of legislation is perfect, I would talk about and commend the government's Renters' Rights Bill, and in particular the impact it's going to have on residents in my ward and across the whole city who are currently living in private rented homes, a number of which are not fit for human habitation. I'm sure I'm not alone in having an inbox filled with housing-related issues. Like many colleagues covering the inner city and some beyond, I'm regularly contacted by people who are at the wits end, living in houses with rats infesting their basements, dampened mould in their children's bedrooms, and outstanding repairs and safety concerns. I hope we can all agree that this is quite simply not good enough. We should not have a situation where people are paying significant chunks of their income, often having to be subsidized by the state due to the exorbitant rental prices in order to live in homes that are not maintained, need intervention and are potentially dangerous to health. Last month, we saw the introduction of Ahab's Law, a change in legislation that came about following the absolutely tragic and avoidable death of two-year-old Ahab Ishak. Again, I hope that this is something that we can all welcome. These changes are an extension of the decent home standard and will cover private landlords and place them under a new standard for safety, warmth and repair, including tackling issues such as dampened mould within set timeframes. This is a huge step forward for vulnerable tenants who deserve better than their current situation. No family should have to go through what Ahab's family did, and this legislation, combined with increased powers to local authorities to act against substandard landlords, as well as our own selective licensing scheme here in Leeds, which will be starting in February two thousand and twenty-six, will help ensure that no other family will. Lord Mayor, I fully support the Labour amendment, and I would encourage everybody in this chamber to do so. Thank you.
Councillor Harland?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I welcome councillor Prior's amendment to this white paper, and I stand today to speak in my new capacity as the incoming executive member for housing. The Government Renters' Rights Bill represents a shift towards fairness, dignity and accountability in the private rented sector. It recognizes that decent housing is not just a luxury, but a fundamental human right that underpins health, equality and opportunity. Everyone deserves the security of a stable home, and this bill brings that principle into law. For far too long, renters have faced uncertainty and instability, vulnerable to no-fault evictions that uproot families and disrupt lives without justification. The Renters' Rights Bill promises to end this injustice by abolishing Section twenty-one evictions and replacing them with a fairer, more transparent system, offering renters the security and peace of mind they deserve. The introduction of a decent home standard for the private rented sector also marks a transformative step forward. It means that every tenant, regardless of income or postcode, will have the right to live in a safe, warm and secure home, free from dampened mould and the features of poor quality housing that have a detrimental impact on health and wellbeing and prevent, excuse me, communities from thriving. We also welcome the establishment of a new ombudsman for the sector, which represents a vital step towards strengthening tenant protections and raising standards across the board. The creation of this independent body will simplify dispute resolution, increase transparency and provide renters with a clear, accessible and impartial route to challenge unacceptable practices, ensuring complaints are handled fairly and consistently. These reforms will empower councils to take decisive, not divisive, oh, you never know, decisive action against landlords who fail to meet basic standards, and this council is committed to using every tool at our disposal, including planning, licensing and Article Four directions to ensure these national changes deliver tangible improvements locally. We will protect tenants, support responsible landlords and foster a rental market that is not just stable and responsible, but also compassionate and just. This amendment reflects the government's commitment to protecting tenants, and I'm proud to support it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Lennox?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So, people in the chamber may know that part of, since I've been doing this job, we've had as much focus on private renting in this city as we have on our own housing and council housing. And that's because, as people have mentioned, it is an important sector in the city. Private rented sector supports many, many, many people living with their families when, as has been mentioned, they are paying astronomical rents, but the financial system decides that they can't afford a mortgage, and therefore people are stuck in private rented accommodation. And I'm pretty pleased to hear this widespread cross-party agreement around this chamber, that unchecked, unregulated landlordism is damaging to the health and the prospects of people who live in the private rented sector, and damaging to communities. So, I'm very pleased that people have highlighted the package of measures that we now have at our hands in Leeds, including the Renters' Rights Bill, including selective landlord licensing and the... including selective landlord licensing and the expansion of Article Four around HMO properties in the city. And we can put all of those things together now and bring about a meaningful improvement in the lives and the security of people living in rented accommodation. I'd like to thank councillor Anderson for all the work that he's done together and with me as my shadow while I've been in this role. However, I shouldn't be surprised to hear increasingly pro-private landlord contributions from the Conservative group, I don't know why it would surprise me. I am alarmed, though, that you will continue to argue against the decency and regulation that this is going to bring in, in terms of selective landlord licensing, and in terms of other measures. The Renters' Rights Bill, for example, was kicked around by Tory governments for five or six years before the Labour government came in and put that through as a priority. Private rent now swallows 44% of the average wage in this country. And to, and when we, and sorry, when we talk about the Renters' Rights Bill, a key part of that that has been discussed is Section 21 evictions, which is no-fault evictions. The ban on no-fault eviction was first proposed in 2019 when your government was in power. And while you prevaricated and did nothing about it, over 100,000 private tenants lost their homes due to a Section 21 eviction because you did nothing, because you love landlords. Ahab's Law was mentioned by councillor Farley. It's really important that we've now got the enhanced powers to get over the threshold, to look at the decency and standards that people are living in. I know I'm low on time. I would point out that strain on local services is much caused by over a decade of austerity and defunding as it is by where in the city people live. And I think we could go further. The Renters' Rights Bill does not address affordability for renters. I would look, were it me, taking decisions, I would look at meaningful rent caps related to income to make sure that people had truly affordable homes that were decent and that they were secure and not going to get turfed out. But thank you everyone for your work on selective landlord licensing.
councillor Hanam.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to focus on how the Article Four direction can support our student population here in Leeds, as well as its importance in controlling the balance of our communities. By having strong oversight through Article Four, we can get the right balance within our communities. This means that areas will not be dominated by HMOs, and we retain some control over the long-term makeup of our residents. Furthermore, it is also key to ensuring the condition of the accommodation students have in Leeds are safe, clean, and meet their needs. Headingley and High Park have a high quantity of students, and I have had lots of students raise concerns over the conditions of their living spaces. Many have reported concerns regarding rats and that living conditions are unhygienic, with no support or accountability from their landlords. This is unacceptable. It is our duty as a council to ensure the highest possible amount of care is given to these students, not just to represent our city in the best way possible, but also as it is a human right to do so. Many members of the public, as well as members of this chamber, will have experienced what it's like to live in poor conditions as a student, feeling isolated and not heard by landlords and not protected by the government. Ensuring the Article Four direction is in place will ensure that these students are protected by the local authority and that these HMOs are given the level of scrutiny that these students deserve. Leeds has an incredible student population. We see a strong diverse group of students who contribute significantly to innovation and the growth in Leeds. By giving students the best possible living experience in Leeds, we are best representing our city. So many students already have fallen in love with Leeds while studying here. That is why so many who come here to study stay here in Leeds. This has brought a wealth of new ideas and cultures to the city, as well as keeping a great number of their skills in our city. It is crucial that we give all the students the best experience possible. That is why restricting HMOs and ensuring that they are of the highest quality for students is so important. Thank you.
councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to thank councillor Hanam for his speech, as I do live between two HMOs, housing students. And I'm sure that, you know, everything that you say also applies to all the students that live in my patch as well. So thank you for standing up for them and for my neighbours as well and my community. Thank you. Lord Mayor, I'm speaking in support of councillor Prior's amendment, and would also like to focus on the government's Renters' Rights Bill. The council welcomes the great steps being taken by the government to ensure renters have more rights in Leeds. During the last government, we saw rising costs for renters, with little support, protection, or care from the government. These changes will usher in much-needed protection for renters in Leeds and across the country, including the abolition of Section 21 no-fault evictions, a key cause of homelessness that was never followed through by previous Tory government under several prime ministers. On top of this, renters will receive the protection they need from several exploitative practices such as bidding wars. Many renters have been caught in a bidding war for accommodation, competing with each other and unfairly driving up rental prices. This is creating unnecessary stress for people just wanting a roof over their heads. Landlords will also be no longer able to accept or encourage offers over the listed price, once again meaning fairer rental costs that match the market rates. Many potential tenants will spend time viewing properties and preparing to move in only to be told that the price has gone up and that they must pay more to secure their accommodation. It's not good enough, and that's why the bill will bring in much-needed change. These changes are particularly important for young renters. Young people seeking their independence and entering their early career want fair prices. During the last government, these renters were completely ignored, and many have been priced out of rental accommodation due to these exploitative pricing practices. Other practices, such as renters being forced to pay more than one month rent in advance, have also seen been a significant barrier for young renters. This is once again pricing out renters in Leeds, as well as giving a necessary financial burden. Not only does this bring much-needed change to the financial aspects of renting, but also greater rights for pets. Tenants will now be able to formally request to keep a pet. Blanket refusal of pets will no longer be allowed following the bill. And to many of us, pets are a family member. This bill will help renters who have to choose between a pet and their accommodation. As someone who struggled to find a landlord, a landlord who would accept pets myself, it's no small thing when your dog or cat is your world. The changes this bill will bring are long-needed and clear and transparent pricing, as well as fairer processes for renters in Leeds, and that's why we support this bill. Lord Mayor, I fully support the amendment.
councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I welcome this amendment proposed by councillor Prior, which rightly recognised the landmark reform introduced by this government Renters' Bill rights. As we have heard today, this legislation marks a watershed moment for the tenants in private rental sector, many of whom have faced unnecessary sudden eviction and check rent like, and substandard living conditions. They have had little recourage and even less protection. Ultimately, this bill is about fairness. Fairness for the 11 million private sector tenants in England, and fairness for good and responsible landlord. It mandates that all owners must meet a base standard for health and safety, because fairness means dignity for all. It puts limits on excess rent increase, because fairness means affordable for all. It gives renters advice in dispute and access to support, because fairness means empowerment for all. It introduces new focus against discrimination, so landlords cannot refuse tenants' base and benefit status or family compassion, because fairness means access for all. Importantly, the bill also supports landlords. It provides clear grounds for repossession in case of tenants' misconduct or when a landlord's circumstances change, ensuring that responsible landlords are not penalised. But perhaps the most transformative change is the abolition of no-fault eviction. Far too long renters have lived under the threat of being evicted without cause, without reason, without warning, and without accountability. This practice has been a direct pipeline to homelessness in our city. Handling no-fault eviction will give families stability so they can plan, save, and build a future. It is, it will reduce the strain on councils and third sector organisations, because fewer people evicted mean fewer people forced into temporary accommodation. It will prevent sudden displacement, so residents aren't having to uproot their lives in a matter of weeks, and improve the fear that discourages tenants from raising issue about their living condition in case their landlord evicts them without warning. This bill is not, this bill is not just a policy change, it is a statement of value. It sends a clear message that renters should feel secure in their home. Landlords should have clear and fair expectation above all. Everyone should treat fairly, and landlord.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the last speaker before summing up, councillor Bromley.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Tenants must feel safe and protected in their homes. And that is why I'm really pleased that we are, as well as arranging protections for renters, are also introducing through the Renters' Right Act seeing the introduction of Ahab's Law, which came into force on the 27th of October. This is a new law named after two-year-old Ahab Asak, who died tragically due to prolonged exposure to mould in his home. The purpose of the new law is to improve housing conditions and make homes safer by holding landlords accountable for addressing significant hazard within fixed timeframes. Under Ahab's Law, all social landlords are now legally required to act swiftly when hazards are reported. Landlords must now investigate hazards promptly, take action to make homes safe within days, begin preventative works within the weeks, or offer alternative accommodation if safely cannot be assured. I welcome these important legal requirements, which set clear standards for safe, decent housing conditions that every tenant should be able to rely on to protect their health and wellbeing. They complement the excellent work of our health and housing. In the end, this is about listening to tenants, acting responsibly, and making sure every home is safe and healthy. Ahab's Law helps us do that, and our local work shows that we're going further to protect those that are vulnerable.
councillor Dixon to sum up, please.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Where do I start? Maybe I'll start at the beginning. So councillor Anderson mentioned that the difficulties of implementing Article Four further on across the city. But I do believe it can be done. One of the reasons is why I wanted consultation, to make sure we do it properly, rather than just do it. There is examples of it. Durham have recently decided the whole city is going to be under Article Four. And that's a Reform Council, which I'm surprised the Reform Council has decided to miss out on this, because they often talk about housing, but they're not here to discuss it. So other councils, Wigan, Finland, Wakefield, Thameside, Walsall, Chorley, have all looked at extending Article Four, or already have done. So there is precedent there for it. But thanks for your supportive amendment, and same with councillor Arington as well. So I couldn't name every Labour councillor that spoke today, but I think you pretty much all had the same hymn sheet. So your friendly amendment does highlight the positives of the Renters' the Renters' Rights Bill, which I do support. And so, yeah, so it did turn into a bit of a Renters' Rights discussion, which was okay. But the main discussion I wanted to get to was the Article Four. But it seems to me there's nothing to discuss, because everybody supports it. So thanks for everybody who did show some support. I think councillor Finnegan made an important point, that he supported it because of the current lack of scrutiny. And I think that's, that's kind of what people are telling me in the street, like, building a HMO there without even discussing it with me, it's next autumn. And I think that's kind of what Article Four allows us to do, have that discussion with the community. And it just makes, I mean councillor Carlisle mentioned about the feelings of the community, and I think that's what we're doing here. We're taking in consideration of those feelings and reducing the transient nature of communities through HMOs. The Renters' Rights Bill has been brilliant, but it has come with a bit of an impact, I'm pretty sure, that a lot of landlords started selling up, which had an impact on us as a council to train house people. Maybe I'm wrong, I might have corrected, but it did feel like that way for the last year for myself. Councillor Bromley mentioned the legal requirements of landlords, which I thought was interesting, because I know several landlords sit in this room here. And I guess their, I best guess their Labour meetings are a right laugh when they start slagging off landlords. But also, maybe councillor Bromley wants to have a word with Rachel Reeves about her rights as a landlord as well, and the laws she needs to address. But overall, thanks everyone for a fairly friendly debate today, in the interest of kindness. Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to call for the vote, first of all, on the amendment in the name of councillor Barry Anderson. Those four. Those against. Any abstentions? That's lost. Vote on the second amendment in the name of councillor Prior. Those four. Those against. Any abstentions? That is carried. I'm behind you. Thank you. Please someone got that. Vote now on the substantive motion, therefore. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Prior. I was waiting for somebody to second it, which councillor Prior very kindly did, just to give Ed something to do.
Thank you. Would all members please ensure they're in their allocated seats? Members have requested a recorded vote in respect of the substantive motion in the name of councillor Prior. Members, please refer to their desk unit and press the green mutton mark, yes plus to vote in favour, red button marked no minus to vote against, yellow button marked abstain zero to abstain. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So the vote on the substantive motion in the name of councillor Prior. Those four, 70. Those against, 13. Have no abstentions, so that is carried. So our final white paper of the day. Please do keep drinking water, it's very warm in here. So final white paper, councillor Prior.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. For far too long, this city has been asked to do more with less. We've heard the same tired lines about belt-tightening efficiencies, while communities in Leeds were forced to live with the consequences of over a decade of funding cuts. Services were stretched to breaking point, local jobs disappeared, and frankly, working families were left to pick up the pieces. But the tide is turning. Since 2024, the Labour government has made a clear, practical decision, and that is to invest in Leeds, not just through empty slogans, but with cold, hard cash. A £67 million uplift to Leeds City Council, the first real increase in a generation. I know the Green Party earlier said we were continuing austerity, but, and that suits their narrative, but that just simply isn't true. What is true is that 14 years of cuts, cuts of £2.7 billion from the Conservatives to this city, cannot be fixed overnight. It takes time to fix that damage. But I would like to focus on employment, because ultimately, a growing economy... But I would like to focus on employment because ultimately, a growing economy isn't measured in Whitehall briefings, it's measured in the dignity of work, it's measured in the pay packet that puts food on the table. And that's why I'm pleased that since this Labour Government came to power, wage growth has been higher than inflation every single month, at a time when wage, wage growth was lower than inflation for more than half of the Conservative period in office. And this isn't a bureaucratic point, this is, oh, sorry, I've missed a bit. So take the £2 million, invest, £2.3 million investment in the Leeds Employment Hub, and this isn't just a talking shop, this is direct support for 1,400 people in Leeds. That's young people leaving care, it's older workers, it's lone parents, ex-offenders, people who for too long have been written off. And now they are being offered tailored help to find real jobs, get real skills and to rebuild their lives. We've also seen the Northern Square Mile and the Financial Services Growth Plan bring fresh energy into our economy. And these are not distant schemes, they mean apprenticeships for our young people, they mean digital careers on our doorstep and new businesses choosing Leeds over London. And with the expansion of free childcare and breakfast clubs, working parents are no longer forced to choose between getting a job and their children's wellbeing. That's worth, worth up to seven and a half thousand pounds a year for every child. That is a huge saving for families who absolutely need it the most. And let's not forget the £80 million Pride in Place programme, bringing investment into communities that have felt ignored for too long, to Middleton Park Avenue, to Seacroft North, to Monkswood, Farney East, Armley, New Wortley, this is new investment and real money. This is local pride, local jobs and real change. The difference between funding cuts and investment is not academic. Under cuts, services shrink, opportunities dry up and communities weaken. With this investment, jobs grow, skills flourish and hope can return. Leeds is on the up and with this motion, we're sending a clear signal that we back a growing economy, we back working people and we welcome the partnership with government that's finally putting money where it matters, which is here in Leeds. Thank you.[732.23][732.23](Applause).
Councillor Leighton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Let's be absolutely clear, if you want a thriving city, you need thriving businesses. Jobs obviously don't just fall out of the sky, they come from businesses having the confidence to invest, grow and hire. And for too long, Leeds businesses have faced shrinking local budgets, crumbling infrastructure and a skills gap that's left employers struggling to find the people that they need. But things are changing and that's why I'm so proud to second this motion. The Northern Square Mile is not just a catchy title, it's a deliberate plan to make Leeds the beating heart of financial and professional services in the north, where we're talking about serious investment, modern office space, transport links, digital connectivity and a business environment that tells companies loud and clear that Leeds is open for business. And this isn't just about suits in boardrooms, it's about good, secure, well-paid jobs for local people in finance, digital, legal services, in tech startups, professional firms that can finally build their future here rather than sending talent down the M1 to London. Confidence drives business decisions and confidence grows when government backs businesses. And that is what this funding uplift and these new initiatives represent. Let's talk skills for a second. Employers in Leeds want to grow, but they need a workforce that's trained, ready and able to deliver. With the expansion of apprenticeships, the north's largest digital careers fair and the targeted employment programmes, we're building a labour market that works for businesses and workers alike. Inclusive opportunities to develop skills are also vital and that is why we continue to support our Send Next Choices event. Connecting send individuals to opportunities, unlocking talent and giving them the skills that not only boosts our local economy, also gives them the independence and the confidence that they need. A well-trained local workforce means employers don't have to look abroad or down south to fill key roles. It means quicker recruitment, lower costs, better retention, it means businesses can expand faster and create even more jobs for local people. And that's also why it's great to see this investment in schools across Leeds. When Benton Park in my own ward needed rebuilding, the then Conservative government simply refused. It was this Labour Council that stepped in to rebuild Benton Park and it is right that now the Labour Government is stepping up to rebuild schools in every corner of our city. This is about turning Leeds into a city where good jobs are the exception, they are the norm, where employers can find talent on their doorstep and where young people don't have to leave Leeds to build a career. That's the vision this motion supports, investment, confidence and growth, and a city that backs its business every step of the way, and I urge members to support this motion.[921.73][921.73](Applause).
Councillor Dixon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My friendly amendment in the heart, you know, it's kindness day, kindness day tomorrow, is that what it's called? My amendment simply just strengthens the white paper and reflects the principles of social democr, of social democracy, obviously, fairness, community and long-term prosperity. The original motion rightly welcomes investment in childcare, housing, skills and clean energy. These are positive steps, but our amendment adds what's essential, accountability, ambition, recognition of historic investment. Leeds and Yorkshire has been left behind for too long. This amendment calls for a clear regional investment strategy so today's promises deliver lasting change. Social democracy means growth with justice, prosperity shared, not concentrated. That's why we insist the funding uplifts like the £67 million for Leeds City Council protect vital services and reach families in, in secure work and underserved communities. This is about dignity and opportunity, not just numbers. On housing, we welcome the new developments, but we demand a balanced mix of affordable, social and family homes. Homes should be foundations for thriving neighbourhoods, not speculative access. So the Pride in Place programme is welcome, but it is, it must be said and it must be true to its purpose that empowering designated communities, restoring pride and opportunity. And it's, it's not just here to be plugging council budget gaps or redirecting these funds, or redirecting these funds to sustained departments, because that would simply just betray the very communities that it's there to serve. On jobs and skills, the white paper focuses on digital affairs and financial services. We go further calling for vocational training and reindustrialisation, manufacturing, engineering and energy production. A resilient economy cannot rely solely on services. Clean energy investment is positive, but ambition must be to meet realism. Britain's energy crisis has cost trillions because the policies that ration supply and drive up prices. And the SDP's energy abundance plan is clear, cheap, reliable power is the foundation of prosperity. That means a national energy strategy led by a state provider, emerging nuclear expansion using proven technology and renationalising energy infrastructure. Energy security is a public good, not a commodity. Fixing prices and bringing utilities back into public ownership is the only way to protect households and industry from volatile markets. Finally, we welcome the Employment Rights Bill, but rights without enforcement are hollow and on education, new schools projects must prioritise areas of greatest need and include facilities for special educational needs and vocational learning. And so this amendment strengthens the white paper, it ensures investment is delivered with fairness, transparency and long-term vision. If we want to restore confidence and build a fairer, more resilient Leeds, we must go beyond one words and this amendment does that. Thank you.
Councillor Jessfield.
I'm happy to second this amendment by councillor Dixon, Lord Mayor, thank you.
Councillor Lam.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I was just checking that Sir Keir Starmer still is the Prime Minister before I spoke, so I didn't say anything, anything inaccurate. So just to inform you, he currently is, apparently. We know who the, who the faithful are anyway, councillor Leighton and councillor Prior, you're definitely part of the faithful. Who are the traitors on this side? Who are the traitors? So earlier today, councillor Prior accused me of being dishonest for having the temerity to repeat what he and his officers shared with us a week ago. That was just before he stood up to present a work of fiction combined with a rewriting of history, which is exactly what he's done here. Now, given that we're being kind, Lord Mayor, in fairness to councillor Prior, and that's why this is so dishonest frankly, councillor Prior and I worked very closely together, for which I will always be grateful, to come up with a way to enable this council to fund the rebuild of Wetherby High School. It became unnecessary because the last Conservative government came up with the funding to do that instead. So it is simply factually incorrect what you have written and it's repeated many times through this paper, councillor Prior. I'm not surprised you're having a difficult day. I sometimes listen to the Five Live Show on a Saturday morning fighting talk and at the end of fighting talk, there's a segment called Defend the Indefensible, where you have to argue something you know is a complete load of nonsense to be able to win the prize. And I have to say, you did a very, you did a very good job, councillor Prior, yes, you did a very good job of defending the indefensible. So well, well done, hats off. Of course, you referred to all sorts of things that are just wrong, unemployment, you picked unemployment on the day West Streeting announced massive job cuts in the NHS here in our city. That's what's happened. Unemployment is going up under this Labour Government. It went down dramatically under the last Conservative government and stayed down. It's only under this government it's been going up month after month after month after month. Councillor Leighton talked about the importance of business. Now, we can do the usual hands up, who in here actually knows what it means to run a business? I do. Who else does? Yes. So as you will, as you will well know councillor Leighton, your Chancellor, the Leeds, I'd say Leeds-based, we now know she doesn't live in Leeds despite having represented it for such a long time, she lives in South London. She has hammered small businesses in this city by putting up national insurance. We heard from councillor Cooper earlier that breaking manifesto commitments is terrible, absolutely terrible. How many have they broken now? And is it any wonder that Chancellor Rachel Reeves has started delivering her budget two weeks early, given she can't be in any way certain she'll actually still be in post to deliver it in actual fact when it comes to Budget Day? This is just a fantasy land presented by councillor Prior. We have the most unpopular Prime Minister in history, even Tony Blair, the great former Labour leader and Prime Minister. We know they don't like Labour leaders who actually win elections and they try to get rid of them as quickly as possible. And even he knows that what you're doing in government is a disaster. It is the most unpopular and incompetent Prime Minister in history, the most unpopular and incompetent Chancellor in our history, doing huge damage to our city. We have a Labour Mayor, a Labour councillor and a Labour Government. It's fine, Lord Mayor, I can see these lot off, no problem at all. Labour councillor, Labour Mayor, Labour Government, Labour disaster made in Leeds. Thank you, Lord Mayor.[1355.73][1355.73](Applause).
Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Second and reserve the right to speak and look forward to taking that up.
Councillor Galton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I know the theme of today is to be kind, but really, it is stretched to the limit when all that you have, from this side of the chamber at least, is watching these two, these front benches on the Conservative and the Labour side, all having great fun having debates about who's best and who delivered more than the other person did, whereas actually, what was proven earlier, especially when councillor Cooper spoke, was that when she was reeling out all these promises that haven't been delivered by the Conservative Party, everyone just thought they were, she was talking about her own government. Because so much of what is being delivered by this current Labour Government is virtually the same kind of stuff as was delivered by the Conservative Government. And don't start talking about the coalition because that ended a decade ago. One of the things, Lord Mayor, that we need, one of the things that we need to...
Colleagues, I can't actually hear councillor Galton, which, which is never good. No, 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 trust me, it's always a treat to hear councillor Galton, but I would, no we can't.[1436.65][1436.65](Laughter). No, we can't put that to a vote. I would like to be able to hear councillor Galton, seeing as he's on the order paper and pretty much everyone else who's speaking isn't, so if we could...
And I will of course get a little bit extra time, thanks, Lord Mayor.
Let's not push it.
Yes, Lord Mayor, so to get back to the point, which was, instead of actually standing there and all boasting about how your figures are bigger than somebody else's figures, at the beginning of this white paper, Lord Mayor, councillor Prior talks about how, how the, how the Labour Government are going to be delivering five times as much as the Tory Government ever delivered. Well, I seem to remember that the Tory Government, when they started, had really big figures of their own and then they didn't deliver. And I think the big issue for the people of Leeds is, what are you going to deliver? Because so far, they've been very disappointed on some of the promises that you said they were going to get from you and you haven't given them. We all remember the winter fuel allowance, that still sits where it is. The stuff around the two-child benefit limit, I seem to remember seven of your MPs were, were suspended over that and then it looks like next week, they might actually get what they actually wanted from your government. No one knows what they're going to get from you because too often, you copy the mistakes that they made. We had a debate earlier around planning, backing the builders, not the blockers. It's the same mistake they made that you're going to implement and people in communities are actually going to suffer. And one of the problems that we have with a lot of the stuff that's in here, you talk about Pride in Place, Pride in Place is great for those places that get it, but do you know what? They're a very small minority of the communities that deserve it. And every time a community gets chosen, admittedly, they were worse because of course, they did it explicitly to help particular MPs in their constituencies because it had to be sponsored by an MP to get a levelling up fund bid through. At least you haven't bothered with that, you've just basically said, well, they're going to be here because we've decided and we think we know best. But those communities then get awash with money whilst ones that are immediately next door have nothing. And whenever you say to an area, and it happens in this council as well, when you call a community a priority neighbourhood, what you immediately do is you say to everybody else, you're not a priority. And then on top of that, in the practice that you implement, you double down. So we had a recent decision around school building, you're talking here about how Labour Party is amazing at building all these schools that you ask for, well, they turned you down for Broome Field, didn't they? But what did you do? Well, you went to places like mine and places like theirs and you took our money that we had off developers to invest in our education provision and you took it and you spent it in his ward. Lucky you, yeah, but unlucky us. And too often, when you're talking about things being sold off, our council offices got sold to shore up your budget. And you joke about U1 number plate, we introduced the U1 number plate because we said, you know what? Heritage matters to people, it's important to their culture. And if you sell off our town hall that our ratepayers in Rothwell paid for to pay off your debts, we've got something over here which is far more valuable and you could sell instead and actually everyone would benefit and you ignore those.
Thank you councillor Galton.
And you sold that license plate.
Thank you councillor Galton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Hartbrook.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Second and reserve the right to speak, which I will be taking.
Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In the spirit of kindness, I wish, get well wishes to councillor Blackburn, who can't be here this afternoon. We welcome the ongoing investment across our city, investment that supports families, creates jobs and strengthens our communities, but we must also recognise that not all parts of our city have shared equally in that progress. There remain gaps and inequalities that continue to shape the lives of some of our residents. That's why I welcome the promise of the forthcoming Pride in Place programme, which includes parts of Armley and New Wortley in my own ward. This initiative is part of the wider UK Five Billion Programme, designed to support disadvantaged communities and revitalise local areas. For Armley and New Wortley, the programme brings a significant commitment, £20 million over 10 years, £2 million a year dedicated to community-led projects that strengthen local connections and improve our neighbourhoods and create opportunities for residents. What makes Pride in Place different is its community-led approach. A neighbourhood board made up of local people will be established to decide priorities and oversee how the money is spent. This means decisions will be made by those who know best in Armley and New Wortley, our own residents. There is real potential here. Long-term consistent funding gives us the chance to think strategically to support projects that truly transform our neighbourhoods, not just provide short-term fixes. The flexibility of the programme means funding can support a wide range of priorities, from revitalising the high street, improving green spaces and local amenities. But with that opportunity also comes responsibility. The neighbourhood boards will need strong leadership and support to manage large sums of money and complex projects. Local authorities and partners involved must ensure governance is transparent, accountable and free from unnecessary bureaucracy. And importantly, this is really important, we must guard against... And importantly, this is really important, we must guard against simply using this funding to fill gaps left by cuts to local services. It must add value and build capacity, not replace what's been lost. We also need to be mindful of consultation fatigue. Residents have taken part in many consultations before, often without seeing real change. Engagement this time must be genuine, inclusive and build on the strengths already within our community. And finally, this is a 10-year programme, it's essential to ensure young people have a strong and genuine influence in shaping long-term priorities and projects. The young people of Armley and New Wiltley will live with the outcomes of this programme the longest, they deserve a seat at the table from day one. In short, Pride in Place offers a welcome and important opportunity. If we work together, residents, volunteers, councillors and local organisation and keep transparency, inclusivity and community ownership at the heart of this approach, we can ensure that this investment leaves a lasting and positive legacy for Armley and New Wiltley.
Councillor first.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I just want to come back on one particular point, which is about levelling up. Councillor Galton, your councillor, colleagues, Lib Dem councillors came to a meeting with Alex Shelbrook about the levelling up bid for Elmerton Rothwell that he was willing to sign off. He wanted a new train station, maybe even at Methley, maybe even some more ambitious plans. Instead, you wanted to invest in the parks. The fact is that when it comes to that, there was a wider discussion and your MP at the time was willing to have that discussion. So it's unfair to have that sort of representation because we in the Harewood Ward, Wetherby Ward and others were all willing to have that discussion. Moving forward, the Labour Party are pro-growth, they say. Pro-growth in unemployment, pro-growth in inflation, pro-growth on the green belt and pro-growth of a number of bloody excuses, my, my French.
Councillor first.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Councillor first, I'd ask you to withdraw the comment.
I will withdraw bloody, I apologise. Hopefully I'll get some time back for that gasp in the audience. It's just been Halloween, ladies and gentlemen. So, the nature of this speech is not, as I'm sure you can guess, copy and paste, unlike our Chancellor likes to do regularly when she announces things. For example, during the last year's general election, she was very proud to turn up at the LGI for once and say that she supported the redevelopment of the LGI, only to then put it on hold and then cancel it until 2034, when she then got into power. Not only at the same time, she then re-announced earlier this year, two major announcements that came under the previous government of £10 million for temple works for the British Library North and £5 million with National Poetry Centre, both announced under the previous government, put on hold by her and then re-announced as if they were hers again, copy and pasted from the previous government. The simple fact about the National Wealth Fund that we now have in this city, an organisation that was established in this city as the National Infrastructure Bank by the previous government, given a rebrand, not very much else to do, but more importantly, delivering for our city and certainly great for our city, but certainly also rooted in what happened in the previous government. So you can't just claim everything for the fact that it's actually just been rebranded. But that's where we also come on to one thing that this council is doing. And what I've raised at scrutiny and otherwise is about the fact that the government announced last year a number of missions and those missions have been incorporated into our ambitions. Well, it's bloody mission impossible, I've said it again, but I withdraw it. It's mission impossible, ladies and gentlemen, it's mission impossible to understand what, what mission they're on at the moment and more importantly, what they're actually going to say next, especially with the con that's going on today. Absolutely, but look, I've still got some time councillor Hazelwood. They forget the £1 billion local growth fund that was set up by the previous government, including £15 million for an incredible scheme to support the heart of Holbeck. Councillor Lam talks about the fact that we have a Labour council, a Labour Mayor and Labour MPs.
Thank you councillor first.
It's a Labour nightmare before Christmas.
Thank you councillor first.
Thank you very much.
He's getting no 10 seconds. Pardon? And be assured you will be making a suitable donation to the Lord Mayor's charity. Doubled. Councillor Minack.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I speak in support of this motion and specifically on the promise and potential of the proposed new town in Leeds South Bank and to place that within context of our successes in house building, notably of affordable homes in the face of the housing crisis. The South Bank area of Leeds, once industrial, once underutilised, is being reimagined under the plans now shortlisted by the government. The new town designation could deliver 13,000 new homes along with vast commercial and community spaces. This is, this is city centre regeneration, it's about bringing new life to Holbeck, Hanslet and to the south side, aligning housing, transport, green space and jobs in coherent plan. Crucially, the proposal includes affordable and social homes with a target of 40% for affordable housing, half of which will be for social rent. This is not just housing for those who can afford market rates, this is for people on the modest incomes, peoples whose life and work, who lives and work in Leeds, people for whom housing insecurity is a daily burden. If delivered well, this new town can help absorb some of the pressures on our housing stock, offer new communities, connect neglected parts of the city and provide more options, more choice for Leeds residents. We cannot talk about future ambitions without recognising what Leeds has achieved already over the last five years. Leeds has delivered almost 17,000 new homes, contributing around 2% of England's housing supply in 2023/24. This is real output, the kind of delivery that counts as chronic under supply in the most recent years. Constructed 4,234 new homes, delivered and also delivered the highest output since records began in the 1980s. Our own council housing growth programme is making tangible difference. In the last five years, we have built and acquired 788 affordable homes for council, for council rent, more than any other city over the last five years, within a further, sorry, with a further 284 under construction or acquisition. Leeds is moving deliberately via its direct delivery approach. The council plans to build 1,000 to 200 affordable homes over five years using its housing revenue account, brownfield land and capitalising on right-to-buy receipts. That is delivering housing from Leeds' own control.
Thank you, councillor Minack. Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. And first of all, thank you to comrades opposite who joined me on the fictional table four earlier at tea, it was standing room only. I look forward to joining you later on next time. Lord Mayor, as councillor Lam touched on earlier, the wording of the white paper in councillor Prior's name is something that the BBC editors will be proud of, given the amount of misinformation within it, in terms of its context, Lord Mayor. I mean, it is literally a rewriting of history, but it's also a rewriting of their own words. Our amendment proves that the comments made by councillor Prior and councillor Lewis welcoming all the things they're now taking credit for in government, which I think all of us take with a pinch of salt, any promise given by this Labour government now. But we should be used to this because this is the, the spin of the Blair years and the reconfiguring of fact and truth as to muddy the waters around what's actually happening. But, you know, 20 years on from that, the public don't buy it anymore. We're more and more alert nowadays to false narratives online and thankfully, our education system is teaching that to our young people coming through. And there's one specific element I want to touch on in the white papers as reference, but also councillor Lewis referenced this in an earlier debate, which was child poverty. Because one of the, one of the, one of the things that the last Labour government did in introducing the statistics of relative child poverty was one of these falsehoods and spins that were set up to deliver a narrative that they wanted later down the line. And councillor Cooper earlier on mentioned things that we won't, we, you never hear us criticise previous Conservative governments. Well, I'm happy to say that, one of the, one of the failings of the last Conservative government is, is they didn't go far enough on rectifying the repealing the Children's Act 2010 when they brought in the welfare reform in 2016. They didn't go further enough in changing the way that we measure relative poverty, because it remains the case today that relative poverty is factored on 60% of median income. So if poorest households lose 5% of their income, but the richest households lose 20% of their income, the child poverty figures go down. That's not the truth though, the truth is those households are poorer, but your measurement says that they're richer because you're using 60% of a median household. None of this actually delivers for the households that need that support the most. They need welfare reform to promote work, to get them off of benefits and into work because that is the way that, that we can solve child poverty in this country, not more benefits. In fairness to the Chancellor while she's there, she tried to do this, it was the Labour backbenchers that stopped the reform and as a result, put up the cost of borrowing and then will mean in the budget that's to come, working families have to pay more tax to give more benefits to people out of work. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry, I thought I'd been bumped for a minute. Sometimes the biggest changes in people's lives don't come from the grandest projects, but from the simple, practical things that make daily life just that little bit easier. That's why I'd like to speak about something that doesn't always get the headlines but absolutely deserves our support, the expansion of school breakfast clubs and funded childcare places. These policies matter. They matter to parents who for too long have faced impossible choices between holding down a job and making sure their children are cared for, between paying the bills and putting food on the table. Under this Labour government's reforms, families in Leeds are benefited from benefiting from expanded funded childcare and school breakfast clubs, measures that can save eligible parents up to £7,500 per child per year. That is not an abstract figure, that is rent paid, that is heating through the winter, that's food in the fridge. That is the difference between just getting by and having that little bit of breathing space. And let's not underestimate the power of a good breakfast. When children start the day with a nutritious meal, they concentrate better, they learn better and they thrive. Breakfast clubs don't just fill bellies, they build futures, they give parents the confidence that their children are safe and supported and they give children the best possible start to their day. And there's another side to this story, the wider economy. When childcare is affordable and reliable, more parents, particularly mothers but not exclusively, can return to work, increase their hours or pursue training, which is what I did. When breakfast clubs are available, the morning rush becomes manageable, work becomes possible and businesses benefit from a workforce that isn't constantly juggling impossible logistics. It's a win for families and it's a win for the economy. Employers get access to a larger, more stable, better educated labour market, productivity rises, household incomes grow and communities become stronger because parents can not, can provide not just care, but opportunity too. For over a decade, parents in Leeds have carried far too much of this burden on their own. High childcare costs have pushed some people back to the brink and in some cases forced a parent to go back to work when that wasn't what they wanted or to, sorry, to give up work entirely, that wasn't their choice. These measures start to right that wrong. And when we combine this with everything else in the motion, the investment in jobs, in housing, in green growth and in our communities, we see the bigger picture. This isn't just about policies, it's about people, it's about giving them the tools to build better lives, about building an economy that works for everyone, not just those at the top. That benefits the whole of our wonderful city. When we support families, we support the economy from the ground up and when we support the economy, we grow a stronger Leeds together. Thank you.
Councillor Hartbrook.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you fellow councillors and thank you citizens of Leeds. I think one thing that stuck out for me here is, I think we're all agreeing Leeds is a great city, Leeds is a growing city. Looking at some base statistics, the gross value added growth of Leeds, that's taking out inflation effects over the last 15 years, has grown 30% against a UK average of 25% and significantly outstripped the growth that the wider Yorkshire and Humber region has experienced. Leeds by many metrics is thriving. What you're seeing in the papers here, both from the paper that's proposed by Labour Party and the amendments put forward by the Tory Party, is, it reminds me of, remember the story of the SAS siege in Iran, Iranian Embassy, where 100, 100 different people came forward retrospectively and said, I was part of that, I helped with that. It's almost like a jostling for credit, which is very easy to do retrospectively. And I'm sure many members on both sides and all sides of the chamber have contributed in their own way to the success of Leeds. However, what nobody has mentioned up to this point is what is really driving the success of Leeds and it's the people of Leeds. And that's where the credit needs to go. You know, we're not hearing any mention, you know, we're hearing mention of the Square Mile project. What seems to have quietly dropped by the wayside because we can't decide whether we're building a hospital or not, is the innovation project that was linked to that, bringing together multiple parties to drive a whole innovation hub within our city. There's lots of good stuff that's been delivered and mentioned and, you know, who takes credit for it? The people of Leeds don't really care. It's, it's growing, it's, a lot of it is good, there are pockets that aren't good, you know, the suburbs, our hospitality and businesses are struggling, I won't mention parking charges, but the, you know, we need to support our industry. It's great that we've got a thriving Leeds city centre, the suburbs is where many of our employers were, residents come from to work and, and entertain. I think what we need to do, and it's summed up in a succinct paper here, is the council notes the growing economy of Leeds and requests a report to be brought forward to show how the council can more closely work in the future to deliver what it's going to do in the future, rather than pat itself on the back for what collectively us, but mainly the residents of Leeds have delivered to our great city so far. So let's give a brilliant summary of what we're going to do and how we're going to do it and guess what? If we do it, by all means, take credit for it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Final speaker before summing up is councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm speaking in favour of councillor Prior's white paper. Growth is what this white paper is about, in particular positive inclusive economic growth and something we all know is that growth cannot be bought at the expense of workers' rights. In fact, growth and workers' rights are bedfellows. You get growth by investing in people, our residents, and you get growth by investing in places, our city. Investment is key and as councillor Prior mentioned, investment in Yorkshire is set to be five times higher under this government than the last government. And here in Leeds, that will include £2.3 million to help 1,400 residents get into or stay in employment, including people with long-term health conditions, which comes up all the time in our committee meetings. And we will be getting something that has not been announced by the Conservatives for sure, an employment rights bill to give our residents and our neighbours day one protection from unfair dismissal, no more unfair buy and rehire policies from the minority of most exploitative employers, statutory sick pay from day one and, and this is very appropriate today, I think, protection from harassment in the workplace. All for our residents, thank you comrade Heselwoods. The, usually if you were to hear about workers' rights from a weak councillor, it would probably not be from me because Jules is so much better qualified after years of securing better rights for working people in this city. Now, in our ward, we have worked with churches and community organisations to set up a whole infrastructure of food banks, food pantries, regular community meals and these are all amazing things, but dealing with the symptoms caused by weak protections for working people. Now, we've got a government that is adopting our model of inclusive growth. So of course, as this white paper says, we need a paper to exec boards that outlines how we can work with the government to learn, for them to learn from our successful model of delivering inclusive growth and to ensure, ensure that we get what we need, which is more investment for Leeds. That's why I support councillor Prior's white paper and that's why I'm shocked to find that anybody doesn't, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Councillor Prior.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will just rattle through some comments of the speakers today. Councillor Dixon, I did, I did like your amendment, largely because it reads like the Labour amendment that's gone through ChatGPT and been lengthened a little bit. I think the only thing it really added was the requesting of an exec board paper on economic growth, which I took to exec board four weeks ago. So perhaps I'll circulate that after this council meeting. You can all have a little read of that tonight because I'm sure you've not had enough of council already. Councillor Goldton and Hartbrook, you both complained we were talking about everything we've achieved in government so far and I can understand why you don't want to talk about too many speeches about student fees trebling because that's what you achieved in government. But I understand, I understand.
Plastic bag tax.
Oh, I, oh, I, I remember it well. Councillor Firth and Stevenson, I, councillor Stevenson, I enjoyed yours more than councillor Firth just because it was less potty-mouthed. I mean, the difference between the things that were announced previously under the Tories and announced now under Rachel Reeves is they were actually backed up with money. They weren't fantasies. They were never accounted for in a budget. Boris's hospital, Boris's forty hospitals. They were never accounted for anywhere. Yes, some of the announcements are not everything we want because it takes a long time to recover from forty, fourteen years of cuts. It was great to hear from councillor Leighton about the reality of running businesses and the difference that we are making as a city to make businesses run better. Education, getting people with better training and jobs. We need a decent labour market in this city and that's crucial to running businesses. And there were a few things that really stuck out to me of how out of touch the Conservatives are. And that is in what they dismissed. They dismissed, councillor Minaka talked about some of the highest house building in fifty years. For the Conservatives to dismiss that house building as irrelevant shows that they do not know what it is like to be living in a house in substandard conditions. Councillor Wilson talked about the greatest expansion of workers' rights in a generation. For the Conservatives to dismiss that shows that they do not know what it is like to be on the business end of an unfair dismissal. And councillor Thompson talked about the reality of expanded funded childcare and the difference it makes to have seven and a half thousand pounds per child for families, the difference that makes. And compare that to the Tories' record on children, where we saw the number of children in poverty increased by nine hundred thousand children over fourteen years. Disgraceful. And do you know what? Councillor Thompson said it exactly right and I think that sums up this debate. These policies matter and this is the difference a Labour government is making. Thank you.
Let's turn to the vote. So calling first for the vote on the amendment in the name of councillor Dixon, those for. Those against. Any abstentions? That's lost, thank you. Vote on the second amendment in the name of councillor Lamb, those for. Those against. Any abstentions? That's lost. Vote on the third amendment in the name of councillor Goldton, those for. Those against. Any abstentions? Let me announce this vote first. That's lost in case I didn't say that. Right, now the vote on the substantive motion. We have a second, proposed unseconded call for, it's the motion, yes. Says substantive here. Yes, thank you. Vote on the motion. We've had a call for a recorded vote.
Would all members please ensure they're in their allocated seats? Members have requested a recorded vote in respect of the motion in the name of councillor Prior. Members should refer to their desk unit, press the green button marked yes plus to vote in favour, red button marked no minus to vote against and yellow button marked abstain zero to abstain.
So the motion in the name of councillor Prior, those for, sixty. Those against, sixteen. Six abstentions, that is carried. Thank you, colleagues. Just before I do formally close the meeting, quick date for your diary and a plea for as much support as possible. On the fourth of March, we have our civic iftar during Ramadan. It will be amazing to have as many councillors there as possible and as much support as possible. It will be a really lovely evening and it will be a really important day in the civic calendar. This is the final meeting, formal council meeting before Christmas. Obviously, we have State of the City. So can I just take this opportunity to wish each and every one of you a very Merry Christmas and a happy, healthy, peaceful and prosperous New Year and, and of course, to the city and our wider communities and of course, to the Jewish community, to wish them a happy Hanukkah as well. I would wish, as I'm the only one that celebrates that in here, happy Hanukkah me. Finally, thank, thank you. That's all I wanted. Finally, finally, as hopefully the whips have told you because this is the final meeting before Christmas, I am inviting everybody to come across to the Cuthbert Podrick for a drink. And councillor Timmins and councillor Stevenson both have credit cards that I've preloaded up to buy, to get everybody a drink. So it'd be lovely to be joined by as many councillors as possible. And with that, and with that, I will close the meeting.